To East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Lees.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Call to Pimont.
Present.
Supervisor Bert Gonzalez.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a packed house here in Montauk Library for our Town Board Work Session because we are going to be celebrating some of our Junior Life Guards and the Junior Life Guard Program. So first, I want to call up Chief Ryan, if you could come up, Johnny, and just talk a little bit about the summer of Junior Life Guards. And oh, I got Big John, too?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
I don't like the dogs.
He's the figurehead.
He's the shy one in the group.
Yeah, so phenomenal year with juniors this year. Our program in Amagansett was at pretty much maximum of 230 or so, certainly greater, larger than it was last year. And I gotta say, I can't say thank you as much as I should say thank you, just as much to the instructors that work with these young individuals that come on to the, come into the junior program with a little bit of concern, but willing to give it a try and build that and build their confidence. And it's because of those instructors working with them that they come in, they're ready to do it. And so our program in Amagansett has been, has increased the program in Montauk has decreased a little bit, but we're working on measures to improve that, one of which would be if Mother Nature continues to favor our Montauk community and build the beaches, a beach in, at Ditch Plains, we move it back to hopefully to Ditch Plains where that's, that's the family beach. So I think that's one of the reasons why our program is suffering in, in, in attendant or numbers. But without, alongside of that, I want to say that our season has been an amazing season. We've had different types of conditions that our juniors have been able to work to improve their skills. And we've, we've made some changes as well to what we want to do in the future. And TJ will talk about that in, in a moment. But we have a number of individuals and going to the United States Life Saving Association's conferences each year, we, there is an award that is given out to juniors that apply for recognition. And, and it just, as we sat there, CJ and I sit there and listen to this, and we just say, you know, this is something we should be doing. We should be doing for our program, looking at the individuals in the program and not just picking out the elites, the ones that are finished first and second and third, and are top of their age groups, but rather looking for individuals that have qualities that we want to see pushed through to other groups and other individuals. And that may be as simple as volunteering to work with somebody that's struggling with maybe having a little confidence getting out through the break. And these young individuals, we all know that we can say it from adult, but when you have somebody, one of your peers telling you, you can do it, it just, it strikes a nerve and pushes them to be, to a little, do a little bit more. So we are going to recognize individuals in each of our age groups, ages nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. And, and we will be submitting these names as well to US LA in hopes that they recognize these individuals as shining stars of our community and Hampton Lifeguard Association. Do you want to do that now before I talk about Nationals?
Let's do that first.
I think so.
Oh, boy. You hit the list, Johnny.
Standing between you?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So the first one we want to call up is Aiden Khan. Okay, so I'm good. Can I just read so that there's a record of?
Aiden may not be here. I know there's one other junior that couldn't make it. They're off in Canada. I don't know why Aiden's not here.
So the Town of East Hampton Certificate of Distinction is awarded to Aiden Khan in recognition of your leadership and selflessness during the 2025 Junior Lifeguard Program. You stepped up for your team without hesitation and showed what it means to lead by example. Thank you for going above and beyond and making our community proud. Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, nine years old. Hey. Lexi App Simon. Welcome up. So this is in recognition of your kindness, resilience, and teamwork during the 2025 Junior Lifeguard Program. You encouraged a teammate through a tough moment and stepped in whenever needed. Thank you for going above and beyond and making our community proud. And this is the Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, 10 years old. Take a picture with everybody.
Okay, good.
Okay, Isabella Morocho. Welcome, Mr. John. So the Town of East Hampton, the Town of East Hampton is awarding you this Certificate of Distinction in recognition of your positive attitude and dedication as a first-year Junior Lifeguard. You gave your all at every practice and inspired those around you. Thank you for making our community proud. This is the Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, 11 years old. The next Certificate of Distinction is awarded to Evelyn Sanders.
I love big.
So this is in recognition of your hard work, determination, and readiness to step in when needed. Your friendly nature and team spirit have been an asset to the Junior Lifeguard Program. Thank you for making our community proud. This is the Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, 12 years old. Hey, the next, this Certificate of Distinction is awarded to Isla Mazola. Ayla, sorry. You can stand up here. Ayla, this is in recognition of your initiative, courage, and outstanding example to others. Your coachability and leadership have made you a role model in the Junior Lifeguard Program. Thank you for making our community proud. Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, 13 years old. This Certificate of Distinction is awarded to Wesley Bold.
Bold, Wesley is, she is off in Canada with her dad. She regrets being, not being here, but she's thrilled to receive the award.
Well, I'm going to read it so that we have it. So this is in recognition of your attentiveness, skill, and consistent excellence in swimming and running. Your focus and performance set a high standard for the Junior Lifeguard Program. Thank you for making our community proud. Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025, 14 years old. And this Certificate of Distinction is awarded to Ariel Rogerio. Welcome, Ariel. This is in recognition of your leadership, discipline, and respect for others. You encouraged your peers to excel, stayed on task, and set a positive example in the Junior Lifeguard Program. Thank you for making our community proud. This is the Outstanding Junior Lifeguard 2025 for 15 years old. So this is exciting, and this is the first time we've ever given out these awards, correct?
Yes, correct.
And this is something that we want to do moving forward, and we're all really proud of you. And thank you for your excellence and your teamwork and your compassion for each other. So what we'd like to do is have, why don't we, do we want to stand in front of the dais and have board members come down and have the captains and the Ryans and let's just get a photo? What? No, that was.
Oh, he's going to be doing the presentation.
So we're going to take some photos, and then if anyone would like to, when we get done with the photos, would like to get up to the, to the microphone and talk about your experience of what it's like to be a Junior Lifeguard? Are we too wide? Guys, if you could take a step forward so some of us can stand behind you. One more step. Beautiful. Okay. Let's hear it for the Junior Lifeguard.
Thank you, parents, for giving us these kids. And also, what is unique about our Junior Lifeguard Program, these kids must qualify at the whiteboard, and they must come and prove they're good swimmers. And as they're not good swimmers, we bring them back again and again and again, and those lessons are free because the town has decided that. Okay? So we really appreciate these great kids because we have great parents and we have great support from this town and the village, too. Good. Thank you.
Talk about their experience as a Junior Lifeguard. How do you have to say a word to them?
Come on, Eddie.
No? Beautiful. Lexi, let's go up to the microphone and why don't you say a couple of words? Bring this down, or we got to try and put this down.
Oh, you're thinking about burial, don't you?
Go on, shoot.
I am honored. I am honored to receive this award, and I know I could have never done it without the help of my amazing lifeguards.
That's great.
The Lifeguard Program is a highlight of my year, and thank you.
How do you follow that? We also have, can we do that now, or do you want to do that later?
So we've got to go to public portion?
Perfect.
And then we'll go to public, do you want to, did you want to speak on the?
No, I was just waiting.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go to public portion, and then we'll go to topics, and then we can talk more about Block the Blaze and Beach Guardians. All right. So the first signed up is BJ Wilson. Welcome, BJ.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you down in Montauk. Wonderful program. I was just telling John Ryan that my son has done it. Now my grandchildren in this town should be so proud. We are all proud of what you guys do and the way you handle the children. It's fantastic. There's another side of Montauk that we're concerned about. The side of Montauk, quality of life issues seem not to be addressed. I talked to a lot of locals. I don't get involved in a lot of things, but talked to a lot of locals. I am a local. Montauk Public School, East Hampton High School. I've been in here a long time. Last time we had issues was the surf lodge, and it was well addressed. I think a lot of people were surprised. Hundreds of people showed up at the fire department to show that Montauk was not happy. We didn't think you were hearing us. We're at that position again. People are not happy, and they want to get their torches and pitchforks out. And wait a minute, maybe they don't know we're not happy. Maybe they're addressing these things, or they don't realize them. The bands in the bars, you'd think they're playing concerts. You give them the right to play music, not a concert. There's 25 or 30 people, and you can hear the music three, four blocks away. Bagatelle? Bagatelle is a different game. They're ruining this town. They're bringing another level of nonsense. 2:30 in the morning on Sunday night, I live half a mile away on a boat, sound asleep. Sit up in bed, what is that? And you talk to people, you talk to the police, you talk to the town. They're creating chaos. Didn't the town, don't we have laws against this? The town took Shagwell to court, what's it, two years ago? Saying you're changing from restaurant to nightclub? They've done that since the 60s. Anybody who listens knows that. Bagatelle was always Gosman's. It was never a nightclub. We have laws against this. Why is this allowed to happen? The music is so, and 3 o'clock in the afternoon, one cop told me, they're going to call some Gin Beach. This has to be shut down. But we need enforcement out here. We need code enforcement to come to the bars. We need some things done. We need your help before things get out of control because locals have had enough. So please help us. Send some people down here. We've got a couple of weeks left in the summer. We'd like to see some enforcement, please. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, BJ. Would anyone else like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have two callers on the line. I'll unmute these callers and get them up and running. Okay, so let's do this. Hello caller, ending 3244, you're on the air.
Oh, yes. Hi, I'm Martin Drew, Springs. Yeah, I would just like to echo the sentiment of your previous speaker in Springs, where we're having the same kind of quality of life issues surrounding the Rita Cantina Restaurant. It seems that they're operating without the sufficient permit. We brought it to our town officials' attention, and continuing on they are. So we too are wondering what it is with the lack of enforcement when we do have laws and town codes and state vehicle and traffic laws about parking issues and the sensitivities about the entrance to our park at Maidstone Park, where it's become quite dangerous as a pedestrian or a cyclist to try to make your way through that area to enter and enjoy the park. So yeah, just wondering, when are you guys going to take control down there and actually start abiding by the laws that we expect to be followed in our town codes? So to be specific, the town code requires 36 off-street parking spaces for Rita Cantina, which they're never going to achieve unless you guys take the number 25 vacant land across the street that's owned by the same company and owners, not unlike what they just did recently when they merged their number 10 Maidstone Park Road into their commercial footprint, and everyone wants to act like every activity down there was pre-existing non-conforming, which it is not. So you want to open your eyes to the facts. There's a deed that tells us how to run the entryway to our park, which is called a carriageway in the deed, and it says it's supposed to be free of any obstruction so people can pass by foot or vehicle to enjoy the park. So you got a lot of problems down there with this new expansion agenda, and it needs to be dealt with. And also, you know, all our other beaches in town that have permits requiring entry have booths at them. So we want to ask why we don't get the pleasure of a booth so we can maintain control down there. We're wondering why people don't follow the vehicle, New York State Vehicle and Traffic Laws, where it tells us to park parallel on a two-way paved road now that thankfully Steve Lynch has taken the opportunity to line the street correctly. So we don't have any more excuses about town while you can't get enforcement, and here we are. The excuses continue. So just want to make you folks aware of it, that we're having quality of life issues, our neighborhood character is being changed, they're parking all over the wetlands, they're parking all over the nature preserve, which is directly across the street that you spent $700,000 on to tear down a four-apartment building unit and with no remorse or regret. So I'd like to challenge you to this. If you do not get 25 a parking lot where these owners can get their cars off the street if they want a restaurant and get back our safety and our quality of life issues in Maidstone Park, then you need to tear it down and buy it with the community preservation funds because this nuisance property is not going to dictate our future. So we're about to fight you in court. So you're going to get your act together, or we're about to sue you all. And I mean that. So that's my comments for today. I've spent three years of my life personally on this, and we need you to start following the rules and enforcing the law. You guys are accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Jason, if you could put the other, next caller through.
All right. Hello caller, ending 4221, you're on the air.
Thank you. Good morning, Town Board. This is Jane during in Amagansett, speaking only as an individual resident of East Hampton and also one who is engaged in getting a Community Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Trust off the ground in the town. And also, before I speak on that, I want to thank you for honoring the Junior Lifeguards today, the Little League team last week, their core, as you know, to the fabric and character of the community. Okay, so I'm commenting, commenting today in advance of your second work session regarding the proposed new Affordable Multiple Residents Use Code, and I look forward to your ongoing discussion and board member exchange of ideas that we will hear again later today. First, I obviously want to say I'm generally supportive of the concept of this new use. However, I do see several important policy details still to be worked through, and there are a number of guardrails and elements that I think need to be codified to ensure that this AMR use will actually enhance and perpetuate the type of economically attainable, stable housing needed to sustain our year-round full-time community. I watched the planning board session in the last week of July, rate this proposed code, and I appreciated their discussion and the distillation of their comments conveyed in the presentation for the board today. In particular, I agree with and see two of their comments as especially important. Quote, "The planning board expressed concern that this use would end up only housing seasonal workers," and quote, "Their primary concern that the use would not end up providing long-term housing to the year-round community," but instead would only be financially feasible for well-funded businesses looking to house seasonal workers. You know, as I've studied it and as I see it, affordable housing in its truest sense should comport with four principles or characteristics. One, affordability. Two, eligibility. Three, stability. And four, perpetuity. At this point, this draft of the AMR code still does not appear to demonstrate the assurance securely of all four of those principles. In particular, the code sets an income eligibility maximum of 130% of AMI. Yes, that's technically the upper limit of affordable housing, but I would suggest that the code created by the Town Board should also focus on facilitating creation of stable, quality housing for the community across a broader income spectrum ranging 30%, 60%, 80%, 100%, up to 130. I don't yet see that element in the draft. With respect to stability, I do understand there's a need for seasonal workforce housing. It's critical, but that this is a special, that's a special category, and it's not necessarily core to the town's affordable housing imperative. So first, I'd like to recommend the definition of resident should read, quote, "An individual that lives or works full-time within the boundaries of the town," and to say that no one should lose their housing because they are terminated or voluntarily want to take another job. Might hear the bell. Occupancy of a unit should not be dependent on working for a particular employment or business. And finally, with respect to perpetuity, I would like to see more in the code and the discussion about how the long-term sustainability of multiple residences can be affordable, can be sustained, what happens to the structures and development on the property when and if the AMR use is abandoned. So I'll leave it at that for now. Look forward, as always, to your discussions, and obviously, at some point, we'll get to public hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. Jason, is there anyone else on the line?
We have no other callers on the line.
Okay, so we're going to move into our topics. And Chief Ryan, do you want to come back up and talk to us about, I know we had Nationals that just took place, and then if you want to introduce Block the Blaze?
Yeah, we can bring up our block, our cadets from our junior program. Yeah, so long, it was, it was pretty amazing this year's Nationals, and it was by far one for the record books when it comes to the competition at Nationals. The conditions, we had four to six-foot surf breaking 200 yards out, which means the distance, the juniors and As, Bs, and Cs, Cs being the youngest, nine through 11, Bs being 10 through, 10 and 11, sorry, nine through, nine through 11, Bs being the 12 and 13-year-olds, and then 14 and 15s were the A group, and then U-19s. The distances they were swimming were over 200 yards out to a flagline. The only reason the flagline was so far out is because that's how far the waves were breaking, these walls of water coming in, swimming out through churned-up whitewater. And yet, not one of our juniors did not go. They swam, they competed, they succeeded, and it was absolutely awe. We were in awe, jaw-dropping, watching them do what they did. As a result, they don't keep team scores for Junior Lifeguards. If they did, we would have won that division. But they do keep team score for the U-19s, under-19s. Midway through the junior competition, our lifeguards that are instructors have to peel away and go and compete in their events. And this year, our junior, our U-19s won the U-19 Division. It was absolutely amazing to watch them succeed. Those points that they earned, they do score points for the team. And we have to go as Hampton Lifeguard Association because we are teamed up with some of the Southampton Lifeguards. And so we compete as a team at Nationals as Hampton Lifeguard Association. As a result, the U-19s points did transfer over to the lifeguards, and as a result of that, the lifeguard, in the lifeguard competition, we scored, we were fifth overall out of 35 teams. Again, falling short with teams like Sussex County, which is Delaware. They won it on the West Coast, going to the West Coast and winning it. They beat Cal State. Cal State was followed by LA County, followed by Monmouth County, and then Hampton Lifeguard Association. So we're competing against countyship. One town, but yet we're competing against county and collegiate swimmers and whatnot. But the highlight of our tournament was watching the number of individuals that compete for Hampton Lifeguard Association swim event after event after event. It's not just you swim it, you place, and we determine points. No, you swim it, you hopefully make it through that heat into the semifinals and have to swim it again and make it through that to be put into the finals and swim it again. Some of our competitors swam probably 24, 25 events in the time that they were at Nationals. And to think that they're getting up again and again and having to go through again, swimming out through that churned-up whitewater through the break, getting out, walls of whitewater, hoping to get deep enough to get under that wave and then get out around the buoy, when there's a sweep that was pulling you, if they didn't go far enough up, they'd get swept past the buoy and have to swim against the sweep to try to get around the buoy. Just absolutely amazing. Out of all this, there is a selection committee there for coach, coaches that, that were looking and watching the individuals compete, and they have to make a decision of who out of all these individuals, hundreds of individuals in the events, should be competing for the US. And four of those individuals came from Hampton Lifeguard Association. Absolutely amazing. Liam Knight, who was selected last year to compete for the US, Dylan Zucker, who is, he doesn't look like he's 16, he looks like he's 12, but yet he's competing against six-foot-two individuals and outracing them. He was selected. Daisy Pitchers, who was a phenomenal swimmer, again, probably swam over 25 events all weekend, exhausted, totally exhausted, but ready to get up and do it again. And then Gemma Garbiyo, who was a sprinter, and they were the first to reach out to me and say, John, we need to talk to one of your competitors. I said, that's fine, who do you need to talk to? And they said, well, we need to talk to you about Gemma, and would she be willing? I said, we get, before we call the parents, we need to talk to her. She said, would you be interested? So all four committed to going to, to International Surf Rescue Challenge, which is in New Zealand this year over Thanksgiving break. And it's, they said, John Locke, you know, we can't say thank you enough for your four competitors to help represent the United States, and it's a testament to what you are doing out there in East Hampton with these young individuals. I said, it's a commitment that they've made for themselves, and it's impressive to see. And it's, it's a spark that can lead to a fire. There's, it's building a fire in every single one of those other kids that were at Nationals and competing. So I owe a lot of thanks to you for the support you've given to our junior program. So I owe a lot of thanks to you for the support you've given to our junior program, and these are our cadets. We have 33 cadets that will be taking their capstone test, which is exactly the test that all of our lifeguards have to, ocean lifeguards have to take every year. They will be taking their test, their capstone test tomorrow, not for certification, but for the conclusion of the cadet program. And they're here to talk to you about Block the Blaze.
Good morning, members of the East Hampton Town Board, neighbors and friends. My name is Artur Rogiro, and I'm here with my fellow junior lifeguard cadet, Orson O'Brien, to talk about something that can affect all of us, sun safety.
Thank you, John.
We all love spending time outside, especially at our town beaches like Atlantic or Ditch Plains, but the sun's UV rays can damage our skin in ways we don't always notice right away. Protecting ourselves isn't just for the beach, it's for every sunny day.
Earlier this summer, our Junior Lifeguard Program gave hats and sunblock provided by the John Wayne Cancer Foundation. This organization gave five simple tips to stay safe in the sun. They include: apply sunscreen, use SPF 30 or higher, reapply every two hours or after being in the water and drying off, put on a hat, especially a wide-brimmed hat, that could protect your face, ears, and neck.
Also, wearing sunglasses protect your eyes from harmful UV rays and prevent long-term eye damage. Do not look directly into the sun. You can also cover up with protective clothing. Lightweight, long-sleeved shirts can keep you cool and safe. Lighter-colored shirts will keep you cooler. Lastly, seek shade, especially between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. when the sun is the strongest and the UV is at its height.
Following these steps doesn't just help prevent sunburn every day, it lowers the risk of skin cancer and keeps your skin healthy for the future.
We hope our town can help spread this message. Together, we can make sun safety a habit, not just a reminder.
Thank you for your time, and remember to block the blaze.
Our town also offers free sunblock at every beach. It's generally right behind the stand on one of the tarp posts to help prevent sun cancer and sunburns. But one other thing I do want to really quickly talk about, yesterday was, I stopped down at Atlantic Avenue as I was driving down the beach, I recognized the serious danger that exists on our beaches. There were two 11-year-old boys digging a hole, two holes, I should say, two holes with about three feet between the two, and they were chest-deep in that hole. Now, my heart started racing as I approached them because one of them dropped down into that hole and was digging a tunnel between the two holes. This is called a sand collapse. Most parents don't realize the danger involved in that. If that individual, he was halfway through the hole, and I screamed to him, "Get out of the hole." He got out, and it only took just a little bit of pressure on that for it to collapse. And I showed him what could have been a serious situation at that beach. It would have resulted in a death. And it's so important that people realize that digging holes at the beach can lead to death. Sand collapses, it's not easy to get somebody out. If that had collapsed, if it was about three feet of sand above him, that three feet of sand probably weighed over, probably 15, 1500 pounds. That would have collapsed his lungs, he wouldn't have been able to breathe. It would have been, eventually, when we got him out, we were doing CPR. I strongly encourage people to have the aware, know, knowledge to understand that that is a danger on our beaches. Do not have, the rule is, no deeper than knee-high of the youngest individual in your group. But trust me when I say, my heart was racing when I walked back to the truck after handling this situation. TJ is here to talk about something else that we are doing to help waterproof our community.
Welcome, TJ.
Thank you for having us. I'm going to talk about the Beach Guardian Water Safety Training. When Chief Ryan and I were in, at the United States Life Saving Association meeting in Honolulu this past November, their lifeguards, you know, turned us on to this great Beach Guardian Workshop program, which was, we participated in it, we took to it, and we looked at each other and said, "We need to bring this back to East Hampton." It's, you know, it's wonderful. We basically have, we've morphed it into two separate Beach Guardian Workshops. One is the traditional workshop where it's more of a pop-up, we'll focus on unprotected beaches, and we'll, you know, we'll go down in groups of one, two, or three lifeguards, and we will gather a small group of people and teach them what they can do in order to protect themselves, protect their loved ones, simple things, literally, the simplest thing is, know where you are. When you get to the beach, know where you are. We have a lot of visitors to the Hamptons, they go to the beach, they don't know where they are, they call 911, and, you know, the dispatcher's, "Where are you? I'm at the beach." You know, that really delays rescue time. And that's going to, that's, we've started that this summer, and we're going to continue with it forever. It only takes 15, 20 minutes, and, you know, we will, and we enjoy doing it. The thing that I'm really going to talk about is the Beach Guardian Water Safety Training, which is similar to our Junior Lifeguard Program, but for adults. We've had many adults ask the Town Board, you know, "Does this program exist?" And now it does. We had a pilot program about four weeks ago, four weekends ago, we started a pilot program. We had no idea how successful it was going to be. We started it pretty much towards the end of the junior program, and we asked parents to join this pilot program, and we did ask them to sign waivers because we are getting them in the water, and the next morning, we had a line of 45 people signing up, which was pretty exciting. So the mission of this program is to enhance water competency and promote responsible behavior around the water. As we all know, the more we can teach about water safety, the more, more people we're saving in the water, at our beaches and in the pools. We include basic swimming skills, some water safety skills. We are teaching, you know, individuals to recognize and understand rip currents and knowing how to respond to these hazards. You know, the key factors in this program are, number one, know your limitations. We never want someone to go in the, we don't want a second victim. We don't want someone to go in the water who is not confident and capable of the task that's put before them. They're better off calling 911, having, yelling for help for somebody around them to go who may be more qualified to get into the water. That's why we always say, swim in front of a lifeguard. Most important thing, always swim in front of a lifeguard. The other factors of this program, we want to strengthen their confidence, we want to improve their swimming skills, and most important, have fun. If you're not having fun, you're not coming to the program. The activities are going to mirror what we do in junior lifeguarding. We're going to do buoy swims, we're going to have rescue board training, we're going to, you know, we're going to teach these adults, you know, to paddle a paddleboard. We're going to teach them how to read the ocean, what is a sweep, how to identify rip currents, all these things we do for the nine-through-15-year-olds. You know, a lot of these parents are so amazed at their kids, you know, they want to, they want to share in that, you know, that knowledge. The other thing that this program, both the pop-up and this program, we're also introducing them to hands-only CPR. So we have, you know, we have CPR mannequins that we can bring to the beach, and every individual will have the opportunity to practice hands-only CPR. And we go into a little discussion on, you know, the importance of CPR and why it's so important to initiate CPR, you know, within the first couple of minutes of, you know, somebody who's unconscious. So this is, this is a program, like I said, it was a pilot program this year. We're going with the town's blessing. We are going to initiate this through Parks and Rec next summer, and we look to having a really, really, really successful season. I do want to say thank you to the town, Town Board. There are some, there are two programs that a lot of people don't know about and should know about. We have the Free Swim Program, you know, the bays provided by the town, and we also have TOWS, Town Open Water Swim Training. It's a wonderful program. I participated every Tuesday morning, every Tuesday and Thursday morning at Big Albert's. I swim at 7 o'clock in the morning. There's a group of, you know, 20 to 30 people, protected with, you know, four or five lifeguards are there all the time, keeping everybody safe. It's not a competitive swim program, but we have some really, really good swimmers. And Tim Treadwell, who runs this program, is able to get the strong swimmers a really good workout and get the less strong swimmers a really good workout and give them, you know, swimming skills, teaching them swimming skills, and make them more confident in the water. And I thank you for that.
Thank you both for all your service to our community. Do board members have any questions or comments they want to make?
No, I just think one of the comments I always hear is about waterproofing East Hampton, and as we have children, a lot of us have children, we sort of forget about ourselves as adults, or individuals that might have not grown up in the area that had the opportunities to pools or the beaches or to programs like this, by you taking the initiative and doing this for adults, which are many individuals that come here. I think it's just a very wise move, and I would support it again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Big John, did you want to say anything before?
On Friday...
You've got to be at the microphone, please.
On Friday, you know, what would be your community center? Montauk Playoffs?
Yes.
Rip and Cutting?
Yes.
That's a celebration, that's a wonderful facility. I'm so proud of the Montauk community that really created this with town support, state support, and it is a wonderful community center, and I'm really pleased to see it.
Well, we look forward to seeing you there.
And what time is it at?
Two to four.
Two to four. Okay, I'll be there.
Okay. So I know many of you want to get to the beach, so you don't need to stay for the entire meeting, so if you'd like to, this would be a good segue for you folks to hit the sand and the beach. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're really proud of you.
Keep it up.
Really proud of you, and thank you for speaking. Great job. That took courage.
You are absolutely excellent.
Jason, we're just going to take a minute until the room clears out.
Sure.
He's awesome.
I'd love to have these programs when I was a kid.
All right, so now we're going to be talking, getting an update from the executive director, Kate Carbonaro from the retreat. Welcome, Kate. We appreciate you coming out to Montauk. Catherine's going to pull up your presentation, and thank you for joining us here.
Thank you for having me. Do you want me to control it so you don't have to? All right. Hi, everybody, I'm, I don't know if this is on, but you can hear me.
Close the door, would you mind, Rebecca?
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kate Carbonaro. I've met some of you, some of you I haven't. I'm the new executive director at the retreat, so I took over for Loretta Davis in January. I joined about a year ago, and then I took over fully in the new year. I'm really happy to be here, and thank you for all of your support. I know the retreat was started in East Hampton, we're always going to be there, and we have such good community support, and I appreciate it, so really, thank you. So, do you want me to just tell you? Thank you. So the retreat's mission is to provide safety, shelter, and support for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, and we do this all to break the cycle of violence. Thank you. This is just a little about our impact in general. I'm going to talk about East Hampton specifically, but in 2024, 2024, we did 3,000, over 3,000 hotline calls. So we have a 24/7 hotline, just all day, all night, and we're always getting calls from people all over the state, but most of them in Suffolk County, most of them on Eastern Long Island. We've provided 4,875 safe nights of shelter for families and 3,000 counseling sessions over that, and that's in general over, you know, the whole year in the whole area. Our legal services that we have, our violence prevention workshops, community services, these are just some of the overview numbers. I'm going to go into everything we do, but, you know, the point is, we're making an impact, we're doing a lot of great work. I'm really proud of the work that we're doing at the retreat. So when we talk about East Hampton in general, just to start with the hotline calls, we say 60 hotline calls, but people don't generally say where they are, and they don't always say it in a way where they feel comfortable, right? So people might call and say, "I'm in Suffolk County." They might be in East Hampton, they might be in Montauk, but we might not know, and we don't press for that. We really just want to be somewhere where someone can call and feel comfortable to talk and share whatever it is they want to talk about. This year, in Nassau County, one of the bigger domestic violence programs called the Safe Center shut down. They shut down in March. So they had 18 beds, very similar to the retreat, they were about the same size, they had trafficking work, domestic violence, and they shut in March, basically a financial issue, I guess is the best way to say it, but it was devastating because on Long Island in general, we have 53 beds for domestic violence survivors, all of, and that's Nassau and Suffolk. So before that, we had 70, and then 18 of those beds went away in an instant. Really, and it sounds dramatic, but it was, because all of a sudden, we were getting calls from them saying, "Hey, we have a family of five, we have, where are we going to put them?" So right now, as it stands, there's a little over 50 beds. I'm proud, at the retreat, we have 17 of those. Most of those beds are for children. And if you haven't seen the shelter, and any of you want to, I'd love to take you on a tour of the shelter. We always do it at a time that it's more private for the clients, but I just, I think it's great to see because, for myself, I used to work in New York City years ago, and I would go to the shelters, and they were a different world. But this is a really safe, it's a beautiful place, and it was, you know, most of that thanks to the town and all of the support of the community, but it really is a place that feels comfortable and safe in the middle of what's really not a safe time for these families. So looking at this, right, we have the hotline calls, in general, the violence prevention workshops that we do, and I bet a lot of the children that were here too have experienced them, but we have an amazing prevention education group, and they are in every school on the East End, and they do great work. I absolutely love them, probably a lot of, you know, Helen at Gins and Barnes, she does a lot of that work. So that's a lot of our, a lot of our work in East Hampton is with those individuals. A little bit about our core services, thank you, and go to the next one. So this is a picture of our shelter. It's in an undisclosed location, I know the board knows where it is, but it's, I said 17, it's 18 beds, but really, this is a space, when you go in the basement, there's an entire playroom, which is great. I have little kids, and so constantly, I'm always thinking about this, I'm always talking to my kids about it, too, to say, like, this is what's happening in the world. I wasn't nervous with all the kids here, because I'm like, ugh, there's some stuff that you don't always want to talk to your children about, but most of the people there are children. We have beds that fit up to four kids and one adult. They have their own bathroom, their own area, but, you know, 18 beds is 18 beds, right? It's like, it's not enough, right? And I know that's a housing issue in general, I was listening to that affordable housing question, too, because it is something that we struggle with. But I'm really just so proud of this shelter, and really, an open invitation, if you want to come, I'll take you over there, because in the basement, we have this closet that was donated, it's called Stephanie's Closet, and there are clothes, shoes, bathing suits, everything you would need for kids newborn to 15, 18 years old. So it's really great because when we do have somebody come and they say, "Okay, I have three kids, I have a 10-year-old, a 5-year-old, a 2-year-old," we're able to come up to their room and put clothes on their beds, and a little stuffed animal for all of them. Like, that's something that I just think is so important because it's a connection, right? Some of these kids are leaving in the middle of the night coming into our shelter, so thank you. So our prevention education work, again, this is something we are so proud of, and we do a lot of work in East Hampton, and I think, you know, I love meeting people who graduated from East Hampton or Montauk and them saying, "Oh, I know the retreats, I remember they were in my classroom." So we do school violence prevention, K through 12. We also have a program called the Fatherhood Initiative. This is something that I tell everybody about because this works with fathers, at-risk fathers, not necessarily fathers who are abusive, but people who are just struggling. They have kids, they want to be in their kid's life, maybe they never learned how to be a father, maybe they've been incarcerated at some point, excuse me. fathers, not necessarily fathers who are abusive, but people who are just struggling. They have kids, they want to be in their kid's life, maybe they never learned how to be a father, maybe they've been incarcerated at some point, excuse me. Sorry. But this is a program we've had for 15 years. We're hoping to get it again, but this program, we work with all of Long Island. So if there's a father in the community and he's struggling and he needs case management, he's like, I want to get a job. I don't know how. I want to pay child support. I don't even know where to go to do this. We can help with that. And that is important to me as part of a violence prevention organization because yes, we're going to help abuse victims, yes, we're going to help their children. But if we actually want to change things, if we actually want to break the cycle like our mission is, I feel that fathers and the abusive partner, it is an important thing to focus on too. So we do spend some of our energy on that because we really do want to address the entire family. So that Fatherhood Initiative is great as well. We also do trainings for professionals and partners in the community. So we work very closely with the East Hampton Police Department. We do trainings alongside them. We do trainings in the community with them. We also do trainings for them. I got to do one earlier this year. And it's really great because they're, I mean, their partnership, they're bought in, they get it. They know this is an issue and so they're really supportive when we say, hey, we have some more work that we're doing. We're doing work, for instance, some of the violence prevention work is on digital safety. If you have kids, if you don't, it doesn't matter. Everybody knows that is just the number one issue right now. It's young people that are getting exploited on the internet that are often being extorted. There's something called sex extortion. We've been working with the East Hampton Police Department on this. A lot of young boys specifically go online and somebody from, whether it's another country, another area, they end, they pretend that they are a friend in the community, they'll go on their Instagram page, get all their pictures and say, hey, I know all your friends, John and Julia and whatever. And then they will make an AI picture of that person, that young person, without clothes on maybe, right? And then they send it and they say, if you don't send me $5,000 by tomorrow, I'm going to send this to John and Julia and your mom and your dad and all these people. We're seeing this across the world, but across in the Northeast, really all the time. This isn't like an isolated thing. What's happening is especially when it's young boys, because nobody talks to them often about these issues, they end up committing suicide. And so while this is one issue that we're dealing with, I bring it up today because it's something our prevention education team is completely focused on and the East Hampton Police Department, which I think is great, just to have that partnership with them because it's something that what we're saying, we're going into these schools and we're saying to kids, listen, this might happen. We hope it doesn't, but if it does, it's okay. Call us, call, tell your parents, tell this person, like, we're giving them all these options. And I bring that up because I think a lot of what our work is in the schools, it starts at first grade, right? So if you have a young kid, you know, first grade, you're not going to go into too much information, but you are going to talk about, okay, well, what do, hands are not for hitting. That's what the program is. It's don't hit, right? And your bubble, you have this bubble of space, learning how to have personal autonomy and consent. And then it goes up and it gets more complicated as they get older. But something that I love about what we're doing in the schools is that we're a constant presence. So someone in first grade and third grade might be quiet, not say anything. Suddenly, we're there in fifth grade and now it's clicking for them because maybe they have a phone and they're realizing it is kind of dangerous. And now we're there throughout their, their lives, really in school. And we also do these trainings for professionals. We're doing a training in the fall with East Hampton School. We are hoping to do more trainings with parents and with more of the staff in schools because I think that's just as important, telling staff what happens if a young kid comes and says this, or they say, hey, maybe the kid comes in and there's bruises on them. Of course, you're mandated reporters, you're going to understand that, but what do you do next? You can call, you can do your mandated reporting, but what are the services that are available? And that comes back to us because we have services, we have two new counselors in East Hampton. One is at our shelter almost full-time, one's at our office on Good Friend. And that, again, it's a resource for the community to have someone specifically dedicated to these kinds of issues. Thank you. So these are some of the schools that we've been in. You can switch, thank you. These are just some pictures of us at Springs, we are always there. And we also have a coordinated community response team. So many of you probably know about this. If not, it's great. If you ever want to come, they're on Zoom. This is a really important thing in the violence prevention space, to have these dedicated groups that are dedicated to stopping violence. So in our group, we're lucky to have East Hampton, the high school staff, there are students that participate, which I love because then we're actually getting it from them. We're not telling them, they're telling us. The YMCA, I try, the library, and we have people from Stony Brook, Southampton Hospital. And this group, like I said, it's on Zoom and everybody kind of comes together, talks about what's going on. We take a little break over the summer, but it's going to start again in September. And a lot of the young people who participate in this are from the East End and they end up doing our Teen Leadership Council. So our Teen Leadership Council is another great resource because we really go to them as much as they go to us. Because, you know, we're all, none of us are teenagers, so we end up saying, well, what is going on in the classroom? What's happening when people are messaging you this? Because we can tell kids all we want, what we want, but that's not what they want to hear. Thank you. These are just some other pictures. Those are our teen leaders. We actually, a couple of our teen leaders have graduated, they've gone to college and then they've come back and they work for us, which I think is really great. This is some of the games we do in schools, we do a lot of outreach. These are some of our pictures from the Hands Are Not For Hitting workshop. And I think those are just, it's important to do this at that age because you end up, at first you don't understand what it is, but then you think, oh yeah, I'm worthy, I'm important. Like, that's something some children never hear, right? And that's where it goes back to that cycle. Of course, we want to think that all the children in school are, everyone's going home to this safe house, but that's just not how it is. And if you hear a teacher and a counselor and somebody from another organization like the retreat come in and say, you know, some people do get hurt by a parent, some people do feel that they're being pressured into doing this. It's just another person where you think, oh, I'm not alone here. And a lot of the prevention education work to me is saying to these young people, you're not alone. Maybe you see your friend have, maybe your friend has this issue. Maybe you see your father hurt your mother. Maybe you see something where you're just not comfortable and you don't know why, and now you have a resource to go to. There's some of our training pictures at the police department. So just to highlight quickly some of the other services, like I said, we have counseling. So we do counseling for children, teens, adults. We have an amazing program we're just starting, which is for adults later in life. It's an elder abuse program, which is so important and just not at all being done enough. So we're working with a lot of partners on the East End for that. And our counselors are available throughout Long Island. We have started just a couple services in Nassau because of that giant gap, but we have counselors in Riverhead, we have counselors in Hop Dog, we have counselors at our shelter and in East Hampton. Thank you. We do legal advocacy. So if somebody says, I think I need an order of protection, but I don't know what that means, we're able to help them, walk them through it and then go to court with them. We have legal advocates who do a ton of this important work that's really hard because there's lawyers, and I am a lawyer by training, but then there's all that gap where lawyers don't always go over everything, right? They're like, I'm doing this paperwork, I'm not helping with this. Of course, our lawyers don't do that, but we do see that happen a lot, right? And so the legal advocates are sort of that branch where they say, okay, now you need help, you need to get your benefits, you need to get somewhere to live, let's call our shelter. If the shelter's full, where are we going to send you? So they do all of the case management and then they go to court with them, every court appearance, just to be with them. And that is so important for somebody going through this, right? So a case that I could think of is somebody, maybe they live in Montauk, they say, I have to get out of here, what do I do? They call our hotline, we help them to get to the shelter, we immediately enroll them in the East Hampton School District, which is pretty amazing. And then we're able to help them with every service that they might need. And then that person says, okay, I want to get that order of protection. Now our legal advocate goes with them. And then they say, all right, I'm feeling a little better, I need counseling, my child needs counseling. And then we're able to help with that too. So it's that wraparound service that I'm really proud of, that we're able to do. Thank you. We do a financial empowerment program at our shelter as well. This is great. It's not always something that people need right away because they're in crisis, but once they get out of that crisis, once they're in the shelter a few weeks, once they have the order of protection, then we can say, well, do you want to get a job? Do you need help with your resume? Do you need help financially getting into schools? We get scholarships for them. That program is amazing. They do budgeting, we have people come in from banks and the community to help them with everything. This is our retreat hotline number as well. And I said, we're going to leave some brochures here at the library too. We have, I think we have some new brochures now. Did you know if we have those? I'll send them over to you because we are, thank you, you can go to the next one. So I'm not going to go into too much on this, but I did just want to highlight some of the work that we are doing here in the community that's newer. So human trafficking is something that I did not want to have to talk about with children here, but I think it is something we have to come to terms with, that it is happening and it's happening here. And I never want to scare people, but this is something I've spent a lot of my career working with human trafficking survivors in the city and then in Long Island and Suffolk and in this area. And right now, there's actually a court that was created in Suffolk County to help young people who are being trafficked, sexually exploited, labor exploitation or at risk of it. So we see them running away, they see them with an older person, their parents are worried about it. Maybe they don't have parents, maybe they're in, you know, a child that's here from another country without anybody. And that court was created because of the influx of people they were seeing that were young, that were involved in court and were being trafficked and there were no supportive services. So we, at the retreat, have started working with the young people from that court and they're everywhere. They're out in Montauk, they're in East Hampton, they're in other parts of Suffolk County. And it's something that is hard to talk about because a lot of people don't want to talk about it because it's such a, it's such an awful topic, but we're seeing it. And so on our, we're going around, we're doing a lot of education on it, we're doing a training on, oh, that's, yeah, that's what Helen's doing on August 27th, that's at the East Hampton High School with school administration. It's a mental health day. So it's all the guidance and professionals at the school and we're going to go and talk to them about DV and we're also going to talk about trafficking because it is something that happens. And this is what, you know, just because this is a newer service, I guess, that we're doing, it's something I wanted to bring up because it's not just because of my background, but that was something that I said when I came in, like, there is this exploitation happening. Domestic violence is so closely linked to trafficking. People who are trafficked end up reporting much higher levels of domestic violence. It's just another vulnerability, right? So we see vulnerabilities, yes, some people are low income and they're vulnerable. We also see this with people that are not low income. And I think that's really important. I always say it because sometimes there is a stigma when people say, well, look, I make so much money and I have this house and I, and I still don't know how to leave my abusive spouse. And that is something I, you know, there are people in our shelter that are really just fleeing violence and we are just helping them. It's not about money, it's about, let's just get you safe and stable and then you'll go on to where you can go. Some other work we're doing, I've mentioned the Abuse Later in Life Grant, there, we're going to have a kickoff for that in the fall. We did a big needs assessment. Diane was so helpful at the, out here at the senior center. And from this giant, we went all over the place, got all of these people to answer our questions and what we've come out with, the needs, is that people really need case management. So adults later in life are saying, yes, counseling's good and this is good, but really, we just need someone to come in and help us to get our benefits, to figure out where to go, to figure out what the next step is. So right now, we're in the process of getting a case manager to help with that. So I'll definitely spread the word when we get that because there, you know, all the programs that exist, there's not a ton that really focus on abuse later in life. It's another stigmatized thing that people don't always want to talk about, but there's a lot of abuse with family caregivers as well. And I think that was it, right? Okay. So that's what we're doing. We're doing a ton in East Hampton. I really, I'm so happy to be in this area, really, because I think it feels safe for us at the retreat. All of our clients that visit us at Good Friend, we're right near Ross School, so it's a nice, like, quiet area. And, you know, I think in this coming year too, we're just growing and doing more because we have to unfortunately. But yeah, I'm happy to be here. I'm really, I'm glad that I got to meet everybody too today.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Folks have questions for Kate?
Just comments mostly. Thank you. You're dealing with some of the most vulnerable people in the world and some of the worst things in the world and you're a counterpoint to that. So what you guys do is absolutely incredible and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
I'd be delighted to do it toward the retreat as well.
Oh, great, great. I will.
Can I ask you, Kate?
Of course.
How has the retreat been affected by, have you had cuts in federal funding?
We have, we've had cuts. It's been a, it's been a stressful year to take over a nonprofit. But yeah, I mean, there have been, and a lot of it's the uncertainty of what's in front of us. Because a couple of the grants, like our bigger grants, they were delayed. We thought they weren't going to come out and they were delayed by months and they did and we applied, but now we don't know. And so in the past, it was something, we always said, okay, we have a transitional housing grant. That is amazing because what it does is when someone's leaving the shelter, we're able to say, we can give you a thousand or $2,000 a month for two years to get that middle place before your next spot. And that was something that we don't know if we're going to get. Like, we would have known already and we don't know, and so we're not counting on it. So that's something. The Fatherhood Grant I mentioned, that's something usually we have 60 days to plan, it's every five years, right? So this year, it just happened to be this year of everything, everything's done and we're reapplying. And so there's, with the Fatherhood Grant we reapplied, we're not going to know if we have it until September and it runs out in September. And so the uncertainty is really hard, for our staff too, but for our clients. Because our clients see, they, they listen to things and they're like, wait, are, are you not going to be funded anymore? Like, what's going to happen here? And so, you know, we've been able to go through, like, we've been able to persevere and I think we always will, like, that's the good thing with the community, but I just don't want to shrink. Like, I think, that's what I keep saying is like, I'm not worried about us ever going away because we're so essential in this community. But when the need is growing, when this giant organization just shut down, doing the same work as us, what's next, right? And so I say to our board, I'm like, we still have to have this growth mindset because the need is growing. Like, it's just, it's unfortunate, but it is. We did have a larger, it wasn't, it was a state grant that was cut for prevention education. So that was really unfortunate because, you know, it was our, we were the biggest grant holder of that for the state, the retreat, because of our program. And so we used every penny of it. And when I asked the state, like, what happened? Why aren't you, why aren't you offering it again? They said, oh, a lot of people didn't use it properly. I was like, we did? And they're like, yeah, but that's not how it works. So that's something, the prevention education, you know, that's where I, I worry about it because I, we've been growing, we have some donors who will give for a position here and there, but we're definitely getting, there's an increased need, schools are learning about it, administration. We do dental and medical resident training as well, which I think is amazing because you can be the best doctor in the world, but if no one ever told you how to talk to a survivor, you're not going to know. So we do that too. So yeah, it's been, it's been a struggle, but I think we have this team, we're so lucky. We have this shelter and this office and so I hope, you know, we, I think we will weather it, but I just want to grow in the middle of it, even though that's a hard thing to do.
Well, I love your optimism. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for everything that you do. It's hard to, to pick out a part of your program that is more important than any of the others. But the idea and, and bringing awareness to sex trafficking here on the East End is such a critical issue for the vulnerable people that get exploited. The idea of digital safety, that importance, and raising awareness for, for, for folks who don't even know they're vulnerable, and empowering them to, to stop it and not feel like you have to go along with something, you have to go along with something. And the sexploitation. These are, these are topics where we don't generally like to talk about in public or kind of whisper it a little bit. We shouldn't. We should be doing what you're doing. And I just want to thank you so much for it because these are issues that are usually, including domestic violence, are, are pushed aside. And I know educating people and, and those who are being abused to understand about the abuse, and that not all abuse is physical. There, there's emotional abuse as well that can ruin people's lives. That, that work that you do also is just so vital for our community. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just reiterate the previous comments. I thank you for, for your service, to the services you provide. To be honest with you, I wish that this wasn't necessary. But unfortunately, it is. And it's a difficult thing to step in and, and do what you do. But it's fully necessary and greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you all. And, and like, I just bring this up in the fall, if there's any, I mean, really, if you think of a place of anywhere that you think that we could jump in to help with education, like, I would love to do that. I think that's important for, like, businesses, too. Yeah.
Just contact the firehouses to the EMS departments because a lot of times, you know, I, I certainly know my own case that I've, I've run across patients who, you know, you know, having that resource there and letting them know that that resource is there in that situation would be very helpful.
That's such a good idea. I really, Helen will know, but I, I, in the last year, I really haven't seen us working with the fire department. But that's such a good point because often people feel really comfortable talking to people like firefighters. So that would be a good idea. Thank you.
And also, I just want to ask you to educate us on ways that the community can help you. I know you depend very much on grants from our municipal organizations and governments. But also, I, I'm sure there's people out in the community that would love to know what they can do.
Yeah, thank you. And, and we do. We rely on a lot of grants and donors. And we, actually, I shouldn't, I should mention this, but we have a thrift store, too. So some people don't know, the, the Retreat Boutique, which is in Bridge Hampton Commons, that's a thrift store. That's something I bring up because it's an easy ask. Because if, let's say people have a, a beautiful dress or, you know, not, not like a tattered old dress, but like a dress that they're like, I only wore it once. What am I gonna do? We love when people donate. All, that thrift store, it, I'm not just saying this because I'm in charge of it, but it really is beautiful. Like, the clothes are really nice there. And they're really, so if people have clothes that they're like cleaning something out and they want to, we would love to have those donations. Also, if you shop at that store, every penny that we make there, besides our staff, goes right to our shelter, right to our clients. And I think in general, just even knowing the retreat, knowing the phone number, knowing, even if you just Google it, like, Kate, I heard that lady Kate Carbit, what was her name? And like, Google the retreat, you'll see, you can email us or reach out if people want to volunteer. If they want to, I mean, we're always saying, there's legal advocates, if there's lawyers, if there's people that want to be on the hotline. The hotline is a great way to volunteer your time if people have time. Of course, financially, we always love donations. But I think in other ways, I'm thinking like, you know, do you have a car seat that is new, that you barely used, and you want to donate it, and it's not expired? Let us know. You know, because the shelter takes donations, and we also take donations for all of these young kids and adults that are all in our other services, right? So somebody that's getting legal advocacy. And we always have these events that are really fun and really great. We have our golf event coming up September 22nd. So if anyone's a golf player, it's really fun. And we're just in the community. So really, like, reach out. And I think, you know, you were saying about educating the community. I, what I like to say is that we don't always know what's going on in somebody's house. Like, we, we don't know, and we shouldn't ever presume and say, this, you're being, you know, trafficked, you're being abused. But even just saying, I'm gonna save the retreat's number. And sometimes there's somebody that you're like, oh, that person seems like they're struggling. Maybe I'll talk to them, if it's comfortable. And say, hey, here's this number, right? Like, we give our cards out, we give a ton of them to the police department to say, just, maybe you don't want to talk to this person, but you feel like something isn't right? You can just give it to them, you know? And it, it's tough, though. It is. So I appreciate that question, and I appreciate that you guys are all, you know, interested in this and doing all that you're doing already for, for us and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, guys.
Great. I'll reach out on a call.
Thank you.
Jason, is, is Eric Schantz waiting in the, for the Zoom?
I'm here.
Oh, great. So the next step is we're gonna have a, a discussion. Eric's gonna lead it in a presentation on affordable multiple residents.
So hello, everyone. Nice to see the town board again. Let me just set this up in full screen so that I can screen share for you. Oh, actually, if it's okay, can I screen share so that I can control the, thank you.
Sure.
So hopefully, everyone can see the presentation. Please let me know if you can't. So we're here to discuss, I'm sorry.
I said it's up now. We're good.
Okay, great. So we're here to discuss the Affordable Multiple Residents Proposed Use. The board has discussed this on numerous occasions, as indicated by public comment. So just as a reminder, what we're proposing is a land use consisting of multiple residences in the form of one or more multi-unit buildings that meet the definition of an affordable housing unit in the zoning chapter, and which meets all the standards provided in the special permit standards for an affordable multiple residence. It's intended that the individual units will be rented directly by the property owner to an individual that lives or works within the boundaries of East Hampton, or their families, otherwise known as a resident, as a defined term. So again, this is, in a way, a type of mini affordable housing development. It would be permitted only in the Affordable Housing Overlay District, and it's really intended for lots that are less than three acres. Again, you need to have at least three acres to do a full-scale affordable housing development. This would provide an option for development of AHO zone parcels that are smaller than that. It would allow private owners to convert an existing single-family residence to a multiple residence or build a new multiple residence. Tenants must be residents, which means live or work in the town of East Hampton. This has to be affordable housing, meaning that the household income cannot exceed 130% of area median income, and the maximum rent is 130% of fair market rent as determined by HUD. Those are both the town standards for affordable housing. And then as far as the approvals that would be needed, a site plan and special permit approval from the planning board would be required before the use could be created, and an annual permit from housing would be required, very similar to an ADU or an apartment above a commercial structure, as far as needing that process, or I should say, at least the housing permit. You don't need a, a site plan, a special permit for an ADU. So the main thing to talk about now is that the matter was referred, and the draft code was sent to the planning board for their comments. That is mandated by the code that you referred to them. This is a summary of their comments. They have a, a form of only written comments that the, the town board should read in their entirety. I'm summarizing here, but I think I'm hitting the, the key points. They noted that the use would have little applicability if additional areas and parcels aren't zoned with the AHO. The planning board suggested provisions that would allow a tenant to remain in a unit if their income should increase to a point where they would not be otherwise eligible. The planning board expressed concern that the use would end up only being for seasonal workers. That's kind of related to the last bullet point here, too. The planning board questioned how a resident would be defined. One planning board member wondered if the current standard of, of 130% of area median income is high enough for families around here. The planning board discussed whether or not a higher green energy standard should be enforced, and if solar or, or other provisions should be required when somebody establishes one of these uses. But the planning board's really primary concern was that the use would not end up providing long-term housing for year-round income qualifying residents, but would instead only be financial fees, financially feasible for local businesses looking to house seasonal workers. So I, I prepared a couple of slides here to hit a few of those points. Some of them, for example, whether or not you want higher green energy standards are really purely the discretion of the town board, and you should have a discussion about that. But just to help the discussion, one of the comments made was about the definition of a resident. What we did in the draft of the code that you have is use the definition that is included in the Community Housing Fund law. We did that because we assumed that, you know, and envisioned that these types of uses may be projects that there will be CHF funding requests for. But basically, that, that definition is, to cut to the, the key part, a resident shall be defined as an individual who lives or works within the physical boundaries of the town. A resident of the town shall include a person who is currently a resident of the town or a non-resident who has been a resident within the past five years. Again, that is taken verbatim from the CHF law to have that definition jive, if you will, with that law, so that that funding could be used for one of these uses. The question came up about a moderate-income family and whether or not the income limit is high enough. So what I provided for you here is the definition in the town code of a moderate-income family. You know, obviously, as you can see here, it is a codified standard of 130% AMI. What you have there in that chart below are what I believe are the updated 2025 figures of what that would represent. So you can see for a household of two individuals, 130% AMI is $171,600. So I guess the, the main point that the planning board had was about the, the economic feasibility of this. And I think what they're really worried about is that any of the properties that are eligible for this will be gobbled up by local businesses who will be looking to house seasonal workers who won't be year-round members of the community. So not really a, you know, direct response or refutation to what the planning board's saying, but just to give, you know, to, to, to give some clarity to it and to give it some, you know, some background. You know, really, you need to create this use first in order to determine whether or not it's going, going to be feasible. And I guess connected with that is that, you know, as a reminder, the town board has full control over what parcels would be eligible for this use, and how many parcels would be eligible for this use, and where they would be. We envision this being a selected number of parcels near the periphery of downtowns. And, you know, that kind of leads to the next point. Seasonal workforce housing is something that is also needed. I, if this does end up being a good model that works for that, I, you know, I don't know that there's necessarily a harm in that. That, that is a form of housing that we need in the town. And I think if you're establishing that along the peripheries of downtowns or maybe even on larger properties, commercial properties, where they want to house staff workers, you know, I don't really necessarily see that as being prohibitive. I think this is a tool that would allow you to do that, depending on how you set up the restrictions and where you designate, or where the properties are that you designate for this use, would determine the appropriateness of, you know, sort of modifying this for that use. But really, the, the key thing here that I have in bold is that there is available town, county, and state funding to assist in the creation of affordable housing. The town board knows that a lot of the pre-existing, non-conforming, multi-unit buildings throughout the town were gobbled up by, by employers. But the town board knows that there are some multi, pre-existing, legally pre-existing, non-conforming, multifamily residences that housing agencies have looked to purchase because they have that legally pre-existing right, and have sought, you know, have inquired about CHF funding so that they could own and manage such a, a facility. They, they've been doing that within the confine of the fact that there are no areas within the town that are zoned for multifamily housing, and they have to find, you know, a not pre-existing, legally pre-existing, but non-conforming such use if they want to, to do a, a multiple residence, you know, affordable housing. They can't do that unless that use is created. And, you know, yes, obviously, the market out here in real estate, you know, drives the price up. But, you know, there is funding available, and they can't even consider projects like that unless you enable that use. There are just too few non-conforming parcels, there are none, that are, that have multiple residences that aren't already owned. And then one of the other considerations here is, so one of the ways that we're thinking people would utilize this is if we put the AHO designation on, let's say, a small, single-family residential property, has single-family residents on it, that owner doesn't want to sell, doesn't want to move. Maybe they want to put a family member in that unit. Maybe they want to create a second unit by simply partitioning off part of that house so that they can get the rent revenue. Maybe they are someone who is, has an income constraint. You know, part, it depends on the house, obviously, but partitioning off a house and adding a second kitchen to create a two-unit home doesn't necessarily have to be expensive. It could be something that is in line with what it costs to build an ADU. We have many ADUs that cost in excess of $100,000. We have the Plus One ADU Grant Program that offers $125,000 to help build an ADU. So it's certainly conceivable that there are some, you know, minor home renovations that could be done by private owners who are not businesses, who are looking to house family members but have more privacy, looking to get additional rent. And, and that is not necessarily something that's cost prohibitive. So, you know, that's really kind of my main points on that. And I think, again, sort of those first two bullet points are, are really the most important ones, which is that, you know, you need to create this use to determine how successful it's going to be, you know, if there are going to be issues with some of the restrictions not being enough, not having specific enough restrictions, maybe having too many. But the town board controls where these would go. Right now, there are only a handful of parcels that are zoned AHO that are less than three acres. We previously identified that there's really only one that's feasible for any future development, which is in downtown Montauk. But the, you know, what we envision as the second part of this process is, is the town board looking at appropriate areas for extension of the AHO. And again, you, you have control over that. And one of the other points I really wanted to make here was, when you look at the existing uses in the town code for housing, whether it be affordable or non-affordable. So when you look at this table, what you'll see is in green, I highlighted everything that is affordable housing and categorized it by apartment, multiple residence, a full-scale affordable housing development, and then single-family residential options. So what I've done on the top there is an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU. It's sort of quasi-affordable housing because there is not an income restriction, but there is a rent restriction. It does require a permit from housing, but it provides for the affordable housing stock. Same can be said of an apartment above a commercial structure. That is entirely affordable, you know, within the definition of affordable housing. There's an income restriction, there's a rent restriction, there's a permit that's needed from housing when a new tenant goes in or on an annual basis. That's what we're envisioning for the Affordable Multiple Residents use. Then you go into sort of the next category, which is multiple residences. And the town code will allow you to, the, the first one that you see in red there says Multiple Residence, Chapter 193. That's the open space subdivision chapter. A property developer can buy a large property and subdivide it, but create multi-residential housing units. It's not very common. They're commonly condoed out. Dune Alpen is one that people know of that didn't go through this process, but it's basically to, to build the same site, type of development. Under the code, you can build condos in the resort zone as multiple residences. You can build motels in the resort zone. You can build multi, you can build a multiple residence in the MF multifamily zoning district, but we only have a handful of properties that have that zoning. It's been mostly erased since the last comprehensive plan update, and they're all developed. The only other use in the code that it provides for building a multiple residence, other than in the context of a full-scale affordable housing development, is the use that exists in the code, which is very similar to this proposed use, which is change of a single-family residence to a multifamily residence or other multiple residence. We are proposing that that use be stricken from the code and replaced with affordable multiple residence, because as we previously discussed, there are almost no limitations on that. It certainly doesn't have to be affordable in any way, and it's permitted basically in, in any zoning district in the town. So we think it's prudent to replace that with something that is more confined as far, as far as where it can be, and has affordability requirements. And then the other uses you'll see on here are full-scale affordable housing development. Obviously, that's affordable housing. Single-family residences, obviously, 99% of the ones that we have in town are not reserved as affordable. But the town has taken steps through its Affordable Home Ownership Program to reserve a number of homes throughout the town for affordable housing. So you have affordable apartments, options in the town code. You have a full-scale affordable housing development that's an option. And you have single-family residences that, you know, can have covenants and, and ownership restrictions on them to make them affordable housing. You don't have anything that's for development of multifamily residences, of multiple residences on smaller parcels. And, you know, I think that can be a very useful tool. And it's something that is part of, you know, sort of common sense, modern planning, is to have multifamily residential zoning around downtowns. They tend to be somewhat of a sort of bridge-type of housing for people between a smaller apartment and ownership of a single-family residence. You have a lot of situations where you have people that live and work in town, and they have families, and an apartment is just not going to be large enough for them. I, I think that creating this use is the first step to creating that much-needed housing stock within the town. So that is basically the summary. Again, this was brought back to you mainly to address the planning board comments and have a discussion about them. I anticipate that there will be further information required or changes to the draft code as a result of your, your conversation today. But down the road, and when we do get to a point where the board, and, you know, the, the board may be confident in this code as it is right now. I'm sure you're gonna ask me some questions about the particulars. Once that's the case, we'll prepare an environmental assessment under SECRAS mandated by state law. We would refer this to the Planning Commission, and then eventually you would have a public hearing on it as a draft local law. But for now, the discussion is really about the planning board comments. And what I'm going to do is go back to the slide that was a summary of their comments to aid your, your conversation. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Dean, you want to take the lead here now?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Kathy. And, and thank you, Eric. You know, Eric has put a ton of work in on, on this. It goes back to my, you know, the beginning of my tenure on the board, which is 2024. And I, I really appreciate the thought that's gone into it from Eric and, and Tina that's gone into it from Eric and, and Tina in the planning department as well, but, but Eric has really been the, the lead on this. I think a big part of this, the, the point of this meeting today is to address the planning board comments and, and, you know, I want to recognize that the planning board, I, I served on the planning board with, with many of the current members. Um, I consider them colleagues, friends, great deal of respect for them, um, as individuals and planning board members. Um, and as people, and I have a great deal of respect for the process and that we should hear those comments and address them. Um, and it's in that spirit that I'll respond and, you know, give my own, my own comments on, on theirs and this, this code in general. In terms, and, and I want to recognize, I guess, big picture, that I think that many of the problems they highlighted are real. Um, this is a complicated issue to solve and that's why it's such a big problem for us. Um, I, I think that it's important that we don't let the perfects be the enemy of the good. It doesn't mean we're not thoughtful and we don't do our best to have, you know, the best code we possibly can have, but there's no way we're going to get it absolutely perfect and prevent every problem that exists or that can exist. I think that many of the things they point out um, are issues with our current affordable housing regulations. You know, Eric points out that commercial apartments, affordable apartments, really almost all the issues they point out, they exist in that as well, or the income limits, or where exactly to draw these lines. We're, it, it's, you know, we're going to do the best that we can, but we're not going to get it perfect. And I don't think that we should be paralyzed until we do. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be thoughtful and I think that we, we have been and, and continue to be. In terms of the planning board's first comment about the, the zoning, I think it's, uh, it's a given and and certainly I'll take the, the blame on this one in that there's not a lot of opportunity with current zoning to construct these. Um, and that's fairly intentional in my part, to be honest with you, because I don't want people to start to um, get bogged down in whether this particular parcel is right or this parcel is right. And therefore we don't even create the use and so it can't exist anywhere. And so I think acknowledging as a town, as a board, that we need more affordable housing and multiple residences is one tool we could use to get there. The first step is creating this use and then very quickly we should look at where the appropriate places are for that use to be contained. Um, and I think it was Eric's suggestion to have it be part of the affordable housing overlay. We've already acknowledged it, uh, overlay district that's appropriate for affordable housing generally. This would just allow for smaller parcels to be included and contribute to affordable housing stock.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So do you see this as then, because that's, that's a labor-intensive project, right, for the planning department to then take a look at the town of East Hampton and where does this, does it exist? Or is it at this juncture, it's for property owners that have parcels come to the board and say, would you consider this for an affordable housing overlay?
I think it's both. I think we, we as a town have, have often looked at parcels and say, this would be an appropriate place for affordable housing. That's, that's, you know, expand that, they apply that designation. So I think that's appropriate. I think, you know, eventually there's, there's going to be a more holistic view, but I, I don't want that detail to cause us not to create a use and not have any opportunity. So I a hundred percent agree that somebody might, we, we've had people approach the board to say, what about this parcel? I think we should actively look at each one of those and determine whether it's appropriate or not. Um, but I also think just, you know, eventually we're probably going to do some comprehensive zoning and that would be another opportunity to expand the overlay district. And look, I'll be honest, I've floated the idea and maybe I shouldn't say this, this publicly, but why not make the whole town an affordable housing overlay district? This is a big problem. Um, and we need to be fairly aggressive about it. This is a more measured way and I think keeping it restricted to the affordable housing overlay district, recognizing that we need to expand that either, you know, on an individual basis or, you know, larger tracks. Uh, but I think this is the first step. The planning board also suggested, um, you know, then another issue that, that, that already exists when people, you know, make more than they originally did to qualify the, and that's a problem. Um, I think we have to be thoughtful about this and in case Casey gave comments from the East Hampton Housing Authority that people aren't in fact evicted when they make, you know, slightly over that threshold. You know, there's a certain point at which if somebody becomes very, very wealthy and can afford a home, perhaps they should not be in a, an affordable housing unit. And I think that naturally works itself out just based on preferences. Uh, but I do think we should provide some clarification on that point. You know, before this is finalized, I think that people should income qualify to get in and there should be certainly some grace period so people don't lose their housing based on, you know, becoming successful in, in the world.
Should we go and just, as you go through each point, have the board members like, so that it's rather than?
Yeah, so, so let's just start the AHO. Um, look, I, I, I'm wholly in favor of looking at each application for an AHO as it comes in personally. I, I'm slightly wary of the concept of creating specific zones where we're going to do it because I think, you know, that, that has its own issues that could potentially develop, but I also see there's potentially a need for it and there's also some common sense to it, which is like, look, if you're next to the transport infrastructure, you know, that can might facilitate some areas that kind of could understand that. But, but generally speaking to your point, there is such a desperate need for this. Um, you know, if people wish to convert to, to do this, I think we should be looking at every application as it comes in.
So I think one of the things in the two thousand and five comprehensive plan that unfortunately was done is that there was a multiple AHOs were removed from the town code. It might've been looking prudent at that time, but unfortunately the crystal ball, I think they got wrong at that time then too. This is in position where we don't have many locations that are currently still AHOs or available for AHOs. When, uh, former, uh, Joe Potter, I believe he was chairman of the Community Housing Opportunity Fund came to the town board maybe about six years ago and gave their recommendations at the time. One of the recommendations was, was to claw back as many AHO properties uh, that were either upzoned in two thousand and five as potentially could be then too. I would like to try to continue that, uh, but I agree with what Tom was saying. We're in the situation here that we will probably have to do this individually instead as, uh, um, until we, until we change the comp plan or we, we look at it again later on. Then too, we might have to do is on an individual basis then too. That's how I feel. That's the one.
Uh, so as far as, as, as that overlay, I agree that we should always be, uh, encouraging folks to bring us, uh, potential affordable housing, uh, to the town. But I, I think that the idea of looking at overlays in areas where, um, you have public transportation, you have mixed use with businesses, et cetera. It isn't a bad idea to encourage people who potentially would like to see, uh, uh, affordable housing in those areas, be encouraged to, to purchase and do so. Um, probably what I'm going to have the biggest, I'm just going to spoil alert, have the biggest problem with any of this is the AMI that we're looking at. And what, who are really targeting and calling it affordable housing? So I'll wait till we get to that one, but, um, I think that, uh, there are appropriate locations. They, they were, they did exist prior to the two thousand and five update and um, I think that there are areas that would lend itself more, particularly transportation, ease of transportation, ease of getting to work. Um, that may accommodate, uh, an HO, uh, A, AHO. All right. And, and I agree with Tom and David at this point. I think it's right now it's property owners coming to us and saying, please consider this property till we get ready to do a, a comp plan update.
Yes. And then you want to talk about the income qualifications too?
Sure. It's the next one.
Um, yeah, this, this one's kind of a complex one for me because I, I, I've mentioned this before that, you know, the, the AMI of this area is, is so clouded by second homeownership that, you know, many of the properties we have out here are by people who don't report their income in this area. So truthfully, where the market is at for rentals is much higher, um, than we potentially see. So what people are having to compete with, that their salaries don't meet. Just doing some, you know, quick basic math. So a hundred and seventy-two thousand for a two-household couple. You know, that's eighty-six thousand each. You know, that's what we talk about with PD and teachers and it's like, you know, you're certain point there where you might have a teacher who's been there four, five years and a PD, similar thing and, you know, they can't be in that list and, and that's problematic in, in itself. But I think Ian, you've brought this up time and time again, like there's housing at all levels that's needed and, you know, this, this maybe is focusing on those really at the, the lower income levels, but then we have what's historically been considered kind of our middle class, but you know, with the housing costs we have out here, that's no longer the case. So it's, 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 it's a really complex one. I, I need more time to get my head around that, but I think, but you know, first glance, I would like to see that threshold be slightly higher potentially.
Higher than one, a hundred and thirty percent? I don't know if we can, Eric, right? Isn't it defined that it's the highest we can go is a hundred and thirty percent?
It's not the highest that, that the town could go as far as how you set the code in your standard. But it becomes almost moot because almost every other municipality um, sort of deems, you know, eighty percent of area median income as the edge of low income and then eighty to a hundred and twenty percent as moderate income. So you could have, so our standard is already higher than most municipalities, including the county. It becomes, uh, maybe moot's not the right word, but it, it doesn't, um, it becomes problematic because, you know, you end up having people at an income uh, that you want to put in a particular project that, um, that project will not be eligible for funding uh, from, from other levels of government. So, um, you, you, you're not prohibited from setting the standard higher, but once you do, um, if you need partnership or funding from other entities, it becomes increasingly difficult to, to justify that.
Right. For instance, we just put in a grant application the end of last month for the pro-housing supply as part of the consolidated funding that the state had. And that was for infrastructure for the Route one fourteen. We put in for almost four point one million dollars. And then we would have to match that. And that was at a hundred and thirty percent AMI. We wouldn't be able to go for that grant if that, if we had our, um, you know, percentage set higher. And, you know, as we said, there's folks at every level that need housing up to a hundred and thirty percent. Mimics what we're doing at the Springs, uh, fireplace apartments where there's uh, twenty-six units, thirteen one-bedroom, thirteen two-bedroom. And that is the only, you know, middle income, uh, development that we have in the town of East Hampton. So, I mean, I, I liked your point and what the East Hampton Housing Authority does is what you said, Ian, is there's a grace period, you know, like you, you, you starting to inch up a little bit, but also it could be that, you know, your salary's going up, but then you may have had a child, right? And then now it goes to, you know, a family of three instead of a family of two and that, and that income level, you know, kicks up. So, um, for me right now, I'm, I'm good with the hundred and thirty percent with, with, you know, a grace built in.
Anybody else?
Uh, Dave, do you want to go first?
Ladies first.
Oh, thank you. Um, so, uh, I actually am going the other way on this and I have, uh, uh, a concern about uh, being eligible for affordable housing in this town, not being open to all of our workers. Um, we talk about teachers and, and police officers as a model, but what about support staff? They, they don't make anywhere near that. So when I look at this chart and I see, um, it, uh, you know, two, two income, two folks making income, one is a hundred and fifty thousand. I, I could, I am concerned that we're not providing housing for a large number of people that desperately need it, that don't make these kinds of numbers, but are essential to the businesses and the, uh, the municipality and all, all the other services that the town provides. I think, I feel like we're always talking about these numbers and, you know, for, if you have three people in your family, that's the two, if there's two earners, it's ninety-six thousand. It jumps up then to, if you have two, two kids and two supporters, it's a hundred and seven thousand each and that's each. So I'm just very concerned that, uh, we don't, we're not offering any housing affordability for the smaller businesses in town and for the people that make less than these numbers. But is that, that's up to a hundred and thirty percent. That doesn't mean that someone at eighty percent. But with eighty percent, you made up. Well, the idea that this can be profit-making ventures, I don't think, I think you're going to look to even a half acre. How much is that to purchase? Certainly two acres, uh, to purchase and then be able to make a profit. You want the higher numbers. And if we just say up to, I just don't think we're promoting anything for the lower number of folks in town. That's my opinion. Okay. And, and we haven't talked about that, about, I, I don't recall what the, I thought it was more like you had to have an, this was for like an acre to three acres, because the three acres. But then it says in the code that you're, it's, um, this will look.
It's between a half acre, a twenty thousand square foot lot.
But then here at the maximum permitted shall be four per acre.
Yes.
So I, I mean, to me, I Two and a half acre. I would, the dimensional requirements, I would start with this because you could always loosen it and start with um, one acre to three acres. Close that gap first before, and then see uh, before you go to twenty thousand square feet, but that's just me. Okay, where are we?
You have anything on income qualifying?
No, I mean, it's, it's one of the biggest challenges I've had since I've been discussing affordable housing here for the last eight years then too is that you want to provide affordable housing for the individuals that need the most or might be more income uh, on the lower side of the income spectrum, but at the same time, there's so many critical individuals that need in the town that, uh, you know, fall within one thirty or if not even up to one fifty on there. Uh, I think the main thing is just trying to provide more units is, is the main thing. Uh, I didn't really register to that the one hundred and thirty percent, how that ties into other grant funding or needs on there. Um, I would probably tend to be more cautious and stick at the one thirty uh, and try to continue to evaluate how we can move that up to one fifty and maybe work with the state to see how, uh, we can work collaboratively then too. So it doesn't put the individuals that are trying to build these units at a greater hardship to find the funding to actually build them.
Yeah, and I, I agree with everybody's, you know, comments and concerns. I, I mean, to be direct and explicit, we, we have a, a problem, you know, across a wide range of people. We need low income people to have, you know, affordable dignified homes. We need middle income. We need modern income. You know, we need workforce. We need all of these things.
And seasonal.
And seasonal. And yeah, that's going to be another story. It's not, that's not what this legislation is meant to do, but I don't think it's a bad thing to talk about seasonal housing. Um, but the fact of the matter is we, we, we start from a particular point. Community housing law set that a hundred and thirty percent. And so if there's CHF funding going to be used, that's why, you know, that number was chosen. That's where we're starting from. Could we adjust it? Of course. Look, I proposed, you know, a different up to a hundred and fifty percent, a sort of a workforce, um, middle income housing. And, and there's all sorts of complications and we haven't, we haven't completed that. I would like to revisit it to Tom's point and to the planning board's point. Um, but again, we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good. You know, this, it would be a, a step in a really positive direction, I believe. And Kate's points about concerns about low income, very valid. You know, we can't forget about those people who are probably the most vulnerable and, and, you know, the least likely to find a, a place to live. But as Eric alluded to, many state and federal funding programs do sixty percent or eighty percent. And so you know, the Green and Gardner's point was limited to eighty percent because of funding sources. Uh, we should encourage and support those projects one hundred percent. One fourteen project that the town is currently working with East Hampton Housing Authority is at one thirty because that's typically something that doesn't get funded. And so, you know, we need all of these things all at once. And, um, you know, to, to Kate's point about profit, that there's a concern there for sure, but this sets a maximum rent cap regardless of their income. And so, you know, you know, we're allowing people to, and somebody could be a, you know, a good Samaritan and, uh, you know, housing trust, for example, or somebody else and charge lower rents because they, they recognize this need. This legislation is trying to create opportunities for more people to provide more affordable housing. I think it's a good thing.
Right.
Um, the next thing, the, you know, seasonal workers, we've sort of addressed that a little bit. This is designed for year-round, you know, tenants. It's a, a year-round lease is required. There's, there's a rent cap. And so if, you know, somebody sort of games a system and has somebody there for one month, they're making one month's rent. Is that a potential problem? Are there going to be any, any seasonal workers who end up in these places? Maybe. Uh, do I think it's worth stopping the whole thing because of that concern? I don't. Um, and, and frankly, I think as, as Kathy just said, we, that, that's an issue as well. That's not what this legislation is supposed to address. But my biggest concern in, in town or with affordable housing isn't that, oh, we're going to provide affordable housing for seasonal workers, you know, instead of nobody at all. You know, I think that that's a, a small risk worth taking.
I, I, I would second that, uh, entirely. And I think, look, I definitively, there's a need for seasonal housing, um, but I think this is more of a priority for the town. Um, you know, it's year-round residents who support a lot of our charitable organizations that support, you know, a lot of our volunteer organizations. That's what we need to be sure that we're rebuilding for the future of this town.
Well said. Okay. Do the next fourth point?
Yeah, yeah. Next, next bullet point. Uh, so for how a resident would be, be defined, of course, it's a very good point, but again, we have a starting point. There's community housing law that's already established and we want to use the same language so that we're consistent. Um, and, you know, the language is that, uh, you need to live or work in East Hampton and, and that includes somebody who's lived here within the last five years. So I'm not, we're not pulling these words out of thin air. We're basing on established law so that we have consistency. And if, you know, I, I'm a believer in, um, a living code, you know, we should, we should revisit this if it ever, it gets enacted and, and make it better all the time. But we're doing our best, you know, at this point, and I think that that standard has already been established and is the one worth going with. And even if it's imperfect, I think it's, it's the best thing for this now.
Totally agree. We run into this issue with the ADU program as well. I, I second your sentiments. I think we have to draw our line in the sand and say, this is what we, where, where we're at and, and move forward with this. this is what we were were at and and move forward with this.
And if we change it, we can change for everything and we have a better definition of resident. But again, there's there's, you know, foundations in current law.
Right. And I don't have an issue whether it's full time or part time work. You know what I mean?
I agree.
We need both.
Yeah, and for me, um, that idea of resident and 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 it is a living code and I agree with both of you. Um, that's why um in in doing this, hand in hand with doing this is also looking at, looking at some of our our other code areas uh and making sure that uh our neighborhoods, our remaining neighborhoods for residential life and for people to live and raise families and work in the town and not as businesses uh through, say, for example, short term rental platforms or, you know, flipping large homes. I I think we also have to have a holistic approach to what the affordability affordability issue is here in this town.
The next bullet point was, you know, concern, we've addressed a little bit that the it was the threshold wasn't high enough. Again, we've we've discussed uh, you know, legislation that would would make a different tier of housing that I think is worth pursuing. It's complicated and and we shouldn't be bogged down by by that idea and not, you know, again, the one hundred and thirty percent has been established. Let's use it, let's do some good and then let's do more good later.
Yeah, I listen, I I acknowledge your position on this. I I think the one thing that I kind of see on this one, which is that, look, this is the opportunity for individual property owners to address the housing need out here, more so than kind of a commercial development of any kind. And, you know, the more we encourage people to do this and and open it up, the more housing we're able to provide. And that's just kind of where I stand with, you know, and and they they might not need the funding sources. So, you know, for us to restrict it to say the one thirty versus a one forty or one fifty, I think potentially could be short sighted. Um, because, you know, if people do want that funding, then stick to the one thirty as your cap. Um, so that's just, you know, I I think to me, it's like by having that cap on there, we're limiting who we can house and how much housing we might be able to provide.
I I I fully acknowledge that. And look, I would love nothing more than to bring back that other, you know, the proposal and talk about a different level of income in a different zone. The AHO though is also recognizes the Affordable Housing Overlay at one thirty. And so if we're mirroring that, I, you know, I think it's the easiest step forward. But Tom, if we want to revisit, you know, up to one fifty or some other number as another type of housing, I'm all for it.
And I think you said something important, which I uh regarding having lower AMI for the people that don't nearly qualify that. And I think that's a big need in this town and I think we're losing a lot of local people as well who children can't afford to live here because they don't make these kinds of numbers. But if we incentivize, uh, offer an ascent, a a program where we incentivize somehow having uh providing income uh places to live for those folks, I I would like to investigate that and and I'm in favor of that.
So the thing is, to to me, this isn't just for a property owner. The town could be doing this too, right? Katie Casey came to our meeting the other day and said, you know, the reason we could, we have the one fourteen project is because the town made those purchases in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and we land banked. And so now if, you know, we would have an opportunity, if let's just say it's one acres to three acres now, we can go, you know, we could be land banking properties with community housing fund money. And then again, turning that over to the housing authority to develop um multiple residents. And if you you put three single acres together, that's twelve units, you know, that we could be doing. So um I think that that's something um that it's, for me, it's not just, you know, the municipality and the and the housing authority could also can be in this game.
I agree. I I don't think anything we're doing here is taking away from something. It's creating more opportunity. I think an example of a, you know, a similar thing was the property in Sag Harbor that the the town helped to purchase for the East Hampton Housing Authority, which was essentially this, but preexisting nonconforming. What we're doing here is creating that opportunity, you know, hopefully with with additional zoning in way more places. So um, I agree with you, Kathy.
So can I ask a question, please? Um, so we're talking about the maximum density of housing units would be four per acre. And how how many uh housing units are in each unit?
A unit would be like one kitchen, you know, one, it could be up to three bedrooms.
So we're looking at only, so each unit is is, it would not contain more than one, let's say cottage.
A unit is, you know, I think basically a kitchen in a in a in a family unit. So there would be like, you know, two, two bedroom units in one structure. So a stru- a structure, um, this law says that you have to, they have to be more than one unit in a structure and a maximum of four. So, you know, the the part of the genesis of this is our Affordable Housing Code starts at three acres. There's not that many parcels available at three acres. So we talked about, oh, do we reduce that threshold? But then, you know, we raised the the density to twelve units. Maybe that's appropriate when you can screen and do a thoughtful project on big lands, but you don't want twelve units on a single acre probably. And so, you know, Eric and I went back and forth with with Tina's help and others and thought, okay, it makes sense to actually come up with a separate code for between a half acre and three acres. I know you're suggesting one acre would be more appropriate. But point being that, you know, the density is a little bit reduced, recognizing there's smaller lots, but still we're creating, you know, a new opportunity that's not there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood what we were talking about when we were saying units.
Yeah, so this would be, you know, on a on a single acre, for example, there could be a something that looks like a house and in fact is four individual units or two structures that have two units each, meaning a couple of bedrooms and a kitchen and, you know.
Not four houses with four bed, uh kitchens each.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Well, it's a good question though, because a lot of people have approached me about tiny home legislation and I think that would be a different thing and also worth looking at. But, you know, Eric and I spoke about this and this is designed to sort of fit into residential neighborhoods. And so it's contemplated that the structures will appear just like the Ecovonic uh manor houses. You drive by and it it fits the character of the neighborhood, but meanwhile, there's, I think, four units in each of those buildings. Um, the next point was uh green energy type of initiatives and requirements. Uh, while I think we're all supporters of, you know, green, green energy and sustainability, um, I think we need to be careful that we can't do everything with all legislation. And at a certain point, I think it would become an impediment towards our main goal here, which is affordable housing. There's nothing preventing anybody from, you know, having all electric units or solar panels or any of that. And I I hope that we see developments that that contain all of that. However, and this was acknowledged at the planning board level, I watched their conversation. If we make that a requirement, is that a reason in one, two, ten cases that something doesn't get, you know, affordable housing doesn't get constructed because that part of it didn't work? And so I just think that um it's a noble comment, noble goal, and I hope that it's how, you know, people construct. I don't feel it's prudent to, I think we can, we can over regulate to make things too complicated and and impede the process.
So my thoughts on that are, of course, sustainability isn't just noble. We have to use what we need and leave something else for the rest of the generations. We're in climate crisis across the world. That being said, um, I think that for me, um, we would need to talk about what we're talking about in terms of, you know, for me, it'd be important to see that there's sustainable landscaping and on all of these projects, no fertilizers, no irrigation, all the things that add to the crises that we're seeing. In terms of all electric, I know the state's gonna mandate that, so I don't even know if we have control over that anymore. That may be a state requirement, state building code requirement as of twenty twenty six. Um, so uh I would like to see uh uh the projects be at least solar ready because there are grants, hopefully, uh that become available for the ability to put solar on. And there's impediments to apartment buildings, et cetera, with the, with one, one um meter for the entire uh building. And I know Katie Casey has come to us uh and got a grant and looks to do this on on affordable projects. I also don't think people living in these should be excluded in in terms of having a sustainable uh world um and contributing to that. Um, and so it, for me, we, I I need to know what we're talking about when we broadly say, you know, solar or this or that. I also think we can provide incentives for that ourselves as well.
Yeah, I mean, look, I I think if you ask someone who's looking desperately for housing, the importance of the green energy aspects of it, they're gonna say housing blows everything out of the water. And I I acknowledge that. I think our position is slightly different here. Like, look, we we, to Kate's point, we can look at the impacts of climate change and realize that if you can avoid them, it's a lot cheaper to invest early on than to try and fix the problem on the back end. Uh, and we're facing it as a town right now in different aspects. So I I I definitely, where possible, I would like to see green energy provisions. But, you know, I think we we have to be very careful that that does not impact the deliverability of it. So be that through grants or through smart forward planning, um, you know, but it's a, it's a fine, fine balance there.
I prefer solar ready, but not mandate solar has to be on top.
Yeah, I'd like to see it all electric with solar ready. I mean, that's what the housing authority is doing, what they've done it with. I believe Gansett Meadow, the Green at Gardner's Point, and they'll be doing it at Route one fourteen. We we said that for the Cantwell report, so I, my vote would be for all electric, solar ready.
Yeah, I I support that, but I also would like to move into uh having the, having these types of programs also demonstrate that you don't need to have a green turf lawn that you need to fertilize every five seconds and irrigate to death uh to be able to have native plantings only um and sustainable landscaping included as well. That actually, I believe, is less expensive than needing a gardener to come every week and and turn it into a toxic green lawn.
No, I'm good with native landscaping. I mean, again, we did that with Cantwell Park.
No, I I agree with all of these comments and I think the sentiment of this board is is strongly, you know, pro sustainability and green energy. But just to clarify, you know, my position here is I don't believe we should be putting additional restrictions on affordable housing that are above and beyond what we require of everybody else. So if we want to go all electric or, you know, whatever rules we want, I think that should apply for everybody. And I think that if we're, you know, making it more challenging to develop affordable housing because we want them to have a higher sustainability standards, I think we're missing the mark on that. And so I totally agree. Um, if the town does a project ourselves, maybe we want to have these these requirements. But um I think by definition, to put an additional stricter standards on affordable housing develops, you're gonna make it more difficult to to construct.
So maybe I could look at if it's a nonprofit building the houses, but if it's a for profit enterprise, I I don't think it puts um an extra burden on the tenants. I think people can build that into the pricing of what they sell to the businesses.
My my challenge about the vegetation is that there's not many, not gonna be many natives that are gonna be usable for screening, particularly when you're trying to put this type of new zoning into some type of, some areas or some neighborhoods, you might want to have different types of screening. And I would probably leave that up to the site plan for the uh site plan application of the planning board at the time.
And and the reality is our garden that Change Hampton put in isn't a hundred percent native landscaping, right? I know Edwina used to talk about two thirds for the birds, right? Two thirds of your landscape should be, should be native.
I I just don't think we can look at things in silos and say, well, this applies to this and it's a townwide goal except for oh, this, this, this or this. Um, so I I think where we are in time, I think it's important for everyone actually to to have sustainable building. I, if we want to promote that across all of our building regulations, I'm happy to investigate that, to make it equitable.
Yeah, no, I I think, I think, I think we agree that I don't want to exempt affordable housing to have looked to reduce the standards, but I just don't want to increase them. I think that, you know, sustainability.
They still have hers ratings and no, they.
Of course, yeah.
No, they, no, would it be the aggregate, like if you're doing four units? Uh, right now it's for forty five hundred square foot or higher. But I would imagine if you're doing a multi-residence, it would be um added for each unit.
Again, the state has passed legislation.
All electric.
Electric, it was challenged in court and the challenge was defeated. So I believe that kicks in in twenty twenty six and maybe we could just get an opinion from the legal department if that applies also to affordable housing, et cetera, which would make this conversation kind of mute.
Not fair.
Makes sense.
Jake? More work for you, Jake.
Thank you.
So I guess the the last point was the biggest one and the planning board talked a bit about it and it it covers a lot of different things. And and I think honestly, you know, contradictory things. For example, why would anybody do this? They're not gonna make as much money as they possibly can make. That's true, but we can't both maximize, you know, somebody's profits in a business endeavor and also keep rents affordable. So, you know, I I don't understand how we square that circle. Um, you know, what this does, I think it creates a reasonable opportunity that somebody could not lose money by constructing a development and renting it to somebody. It's a reasonable business opportunity, not the, not the most profitable one you can do in the Hamptons. But I hope that there's people out there who recognize this as a need and want to construct affordable housing. And we'll just acknowledge this isn't gonna be, you know, a a get rich quick scheme, but at least we're providing an avenue in which, you know, private developers, and yes, a business, I, you know, I don't think it's the end of the world if a business constructs stuff that provides affordable housing for our workforce. Do I have reservations about people's work being tied to their housing? Of course. Uh, does that mean that we shouldn't create opportunities where maybe those are the people who can, we'll see what happens? You know, if 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 that's who's constructing, if it's a housing trust and or somebody else who's doing it purely out of the goodness of their heart, fantastic. I think the goal here is to create legislation which leads to opportunities for more units coming from more places. You know, we have the housing authority, the town is gonna continue to do all that we can to, to, you know, to contribute funds. The CH uh funds have been a big part of that. Um, but we need, you know, sort of all things at once here and that's, that's the goal of this legislation.
Yeah, I just always, I'm gonna say the same thing. This is such, we are one of the most attractive places, certainly in New York State. And and we rank very highly when you research the data from short term rentals. We are prime territory for maximizing your profit in these types of rentals. So I just want to know how we're going to make sure that these are going to be used for the use intended. That's extremely important. Uh, and I know, you know, we're saying you have to register once a year. But let's talk about enforcement and how we're going to make sure that that gets enforced, what kind of staff we're gonna need. Let's talk about the reality of the cost of that also um type of enforcement, so we ensure that it happens. Um, and uh, that's the only thing I always say is I want to, I have to know that we did our best to make sure that these units are gonna go to the people that they are intended to go to.
And that, that to me, across the board, I completely agree with. And that's the only reason I voted for the community hu- uh housing fund when we moved that way is for the level enforcement, that mechanism that has to be going through either through the housing office, which we initially discussed, or the building department then to make sure the units, all the units in town, not just any new ones we might go, are being properly used for the intended results and the intended individuals. I agree with that.
Yeah, I I I would, I would totally agree. I mean, I I um, look, it's the nature of most people that they're gonna look to maximize profit. And, you know, I, you know, you you hope that there's some kind of form of social responsibility that comes with that, but often that's not the case. And I I think we have to have guardrails in place here to ensure that this delivers what the need actually is for the town as a whole.
So since these are affordable apartments, we don't, as a town, typically manage affordable apartments, right? We we give that over to the East Hampton Housing Authority. They've been doing it. They've got five properties, I believe, actually now more with the cottages with one oh nine Hampton Street. Um, and they seem to be doing a great job of being able to manage, making sure that the folks that are in their units are um living up to, they get annual inspections by the commissioners uh to make sure that people are living, that their conditions are um safe, that there's, you know, no hoarding going on, things like that. So, I mean, I see this as being, you know, we may want to consider, say, you know, Acme Business decides to build twelve units, um, that the housing authority is the one that's managing the project and that making sure everything is, you know, up to, not.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know about the legality of that. That's a, it's a fine idea. And I also think the housing authority is becoming busier and busier with all the projects they have going on. But um I think enforcement is a major, is a major consideration. But I think it's, this is analogous to our affordable commercial apartments, which already require a permit and ADUs. You know, they they get a permit from the housing department, um, you know, they are inspected, things are checked on. If we can tighten that up and make sure that, you know, things are used as intended, of course. But I think that the the laws, what the law states, if we make sure that's what happens, does that job. But I think that those concerns are very, very valid. And um, hey, look, the housing department's a small department in town, you know, if there's a a lot of these that exist, we're gonna have to think of, you know, how to make sure enforcement is a big part of it.
Yeah, I think it's this kind of concept that might require an oversight committee at a town level that, you know, people have concerns as being abused or misused. It gets investigated by enforcement and brought to that committee for review.
You're dealing with very sensitive, like, information. I'm the liaison to the housing authority. When they go into exec session, that's when they discuss tenants. I don't stay for those conversations. I don't stay for those conversations because I'm not a commissioner, I'm just the liaison. So I, you know, you're looking at people's tax returns. I don't know if having a town citizen committee is the mechanism. That's why I think having been the liaison to the housing authority for two and a half years now, I think it's right up their alley, and they have the the expertise and the processes already in place for managing this type of thing.
And again, not working in silos, we may not have to look at that issue through this particular code. But when I bring the updates to the rental registry code that we have, we may be looking at being able to have stronger enforcement of what gets put out there on social, on the platforms for these for these short-term rentals, et cetera. So again, just looking at it a little bit more holistically, how we can tie something enforcement for this also into that as well.
Yeah, I agree. And again, I just, I think that the, you know, we already have an analogous situation, which is ADUs, which are ADUs and commercial affordable apartments. And so, you know, this is sort of lumped in with those. And as affordable housing units expand and grow, enforcement's going to be, you know, a bigger issue. And I'm open to all ideas, if it's the housing authority, if it's, you know, somebody else. It's important that the intended goal is what we achieve.
Agreed.
And then, I mean, I guess just to just to wrap it up, there is one one point, Eric, that we set the minimum size for one of these units at 400 square feet. You and I have spoken about this. I was, my understanding that was the minimum for ADUs, but it's actually 300 square feet. And so I would go a little bit smaller to say 300 square feet again, in the interest of being able to provide as many as possible. I don't think there's a lot of, you know, apartments that'll be constructed at 300 square feet, but I don't see the harm in allowing that minimum to match sort of ADU standards. So that would be one substantive change that I have. Beyond that, you know, I want to move forward quickly on this. I think there's a couple of things to tidy up here. You know, I think we need to be thoughtful. I think we have been, but I think we need to take action. And I think that, you know, through Eric's work and the planning board's comments and the board here, we've got, you know, the draft a very good code that I think we should take to public hearing and hopefully adopt soon.
I'd like to see see the changes incorporated that we've spoken about or addressed before we go to public hearing.
Which ones specifically, just so I make sure we?
Well, the, all of the items that we just talked about.
I have, oh, I was going to say, I have a list, maybe I could read them off and then, you know what I mean? Because I will work on draft revisions.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just so we have a very clear understanding of what.
Yeah, that works, Eric.
Before we get there.
Wait, Eric, hold on a second.
Sorry, sorry, Eric. Good to see you, Eric. Before we get there, I might have two more, and one might just be for clarity. So Chapter 193, 160 is where the multiple residency currently is right now. Are we maintaining that in the code or are we going to remove that from the code?
Chapter 193?
193, 160, that's where the multiple residency currently is.
That's where you said you're looking to strike?
No, no, no. The use in the code that currently exists that is a change of a single-family residence to a multiple residence with no affordability requirements is in Chapter 255. It's a use listed in the use table, and it has its own special permit standards in 255, 550. What I was referencing from Chapter 193, which is open space subdivisions, there is a provision in the code that allows a developer to take a large residential property and rather than dividing it up into lots and a reserved area, they can basically cluster all of their density into multifamily residential buildings. It's very uncommon, we only have a handful in the town, but, you know, you'll see a large property with, you know, connected condo units usually. That's the mechanism in the code that allows them to do that. I only brought that up in the context of the housing options that exist in the code to show that, you know, we do have this mechanism, but it's certainly not for affordable housing, and it's rarely used.
Sure, and that's the Doon Alpin or Prescape or those discussions?
Yeah, and that that section doesn't need to be revised.
Okay.
But the one that you said that we're looking to strike, you said that was Chapter 255-5-50?
Yes, and then, so those are the specific special permit standards for various uses. And then it goes alphabetically by use, you know, retail restaurant, or restaurant will come first.
That happening while we're doing the public hearing for this?
Yes, yeah, I would propose that you strike that in its entirety while you consider adding this this use.
I just echo Ian's point. I mean, look, we talk about this housing crisis and, you know, I acknowledge we have questions here, but I would like this to move to public hearing as soon as possible. I think, you know, we have to move on this, you know, and we can address this either by email or offline.
I think we should discuss it in public, but we're going to get a draft code before we get a public hearing.
We have a draft code, it was.
Why don't you, Eric, go through the list that you just made?
So sorry, I just have one more.
Oh, sorry.
There was one out of two. The second one is, this is a little bit potentially different situation for affordable housing from entities that wouldn't be actually, but maybe even not even NGO or government-related then too. What happens for some reason if the provider of these units somehow was not able to provide the units anymore? If it was bankruptcy or some other situation, and that use ceases on there? Do they have to, how does that go? Is it, you're removing a use in a special permit from a project? Do they have to remove, do they have to go conform to what the code was and to what the property was initially, or what happens there?
That's a good question. So if, so seller business sells, like we've seen happen multiple times, do they, do they, what happens with the?
I think the closest thing I can go to, and I hope this analogy works enough here. It's if it is an artist's studio, artist's studios could be larger than accessory structure. But if that use ceases based on multiple reasons in the code, the structure has to either become the size of artists, of accessory structure or not. So I guess the situation here is what happens if something 15, 20, whatever years goes on, it doesn't doesn't work out? And two, are you now have, what do you have on the property?
So when we looked at this with the ADU committee, the guidance they gave on this is that the property has to revert back. So the kitchen would have to be taken out, you know. To me, with this one, like, I would say that, look, if someone's going into bankruptcy or the business has gone out, the property is likely to sell. I mean, that therein lies a thing. We don't want to lose the housing.
Give a grace period, maybe?
Exactly.
All right, so that might be something, is there a grace period of a year or something like that, too? I mean, you see what I'm getting to.
Only kind of. I think that, like with all zoning, there's allowable uses. And so if you own this property and I have to move out of town, I sell the property and that person's allowed to do whatever's allowed by zoning. So they presumably could tear it down and construct a single-family home if that's what the zoning allows, or they could keep the multiple residents and keep the rents affordable and keep that use going. So to me, it works itself out. I mean, you're allowed to do what you're allowed to do. And regardless of who owns it, the use exists.
So even if, even if it's a bankruptcy and the assets are sold off, and this is an asset of the company, the use would still?
It's still a stay of the use.
Well, if you buy any property, and you buy a property that is currently a restaurant, but you want to make a grocery, you know, you're allowed to do what you're allowed to do. So I would hope that somebody would purchase it. And I think that if you look at how non-conforming uses have, they have been gobbled up by people who want to, you know, take advantage of that. So I would hope that people would buy it and.
Well, this won't be non-conforming, but I understand.
No, I know, but I'm saying like if somebody has a four-unit, you know, structure on one acre, I would hope that the person who buys that or, you know, acquires it wants to continue that use. Would they be prevented?
They have to become to what the, you know, the underlying zoning.
Yeah, they could, they could convert it into like a single-family residence if they wanted to, if that's what the zoning allows. But in no scenario would they be able to keep four apartments and charge, you know, have rents that aren't affordable.
Exactly. That therein lies.
I mean, you just, you have to follow the rules. It's, to me, that's clear cut. I mean, there's going to be interesting business things that happen, but I think that happens with parcels anyway, and you just have to abide by zoning.
Agreed.
Okay, Eric, you want to go through your list, please?
And what, can I say one other thing? Eric did provide the the actual code, and so on the first page, there's the part that's being struck through. I do think that we should be specific about, because this is what, the presentation was great, the conversation is great, but the code is the code. And so if there's any details in here that don't conform to what our intentions are, I think we should discuss. The one substantive thing that I had was the 400 square feet to 300, minimum. Sorry, Eric.
Yeah, no worries. So what I had was that perhaps having a requirement for sustainable landscaping, as a reminder, you know, it is proposed and in that draft code that these would all go in front of the planning board. So they're going to be reviewed with a site plan. So that is an easy enough requirement. The planning board already encourages use of native plants, drought-tolerant plants, requires that any invasives be removed from landscaping and screening plans. So, you know, this would sort of further something that they're already doing. So sustainable landscaping being one requirement. The other two kind of related were solar-ready and all-electric. I will say, not to refute those, but just to say for the board, you could have those be hard requirements, you could also have them be suggestions for the town board. So in other words, something to the effect of, you know, all units must be solar-ready, you know, as determined by the building department or someone, an expert. All units must be, you know, all-electric. Or you could say, you know, the planning board is encouraged to, you know, work with the applicants to have them be this way, have it be a softer, not a hard requirement. I'll let you discuss that. But I guess the one thing in this, though, is that I do, we did craft this and we do envision it being an option also for, you know, and again, totally depending on which properties you would give the AHO designation to. But for, let's say, you know, an older home or, you know, a lot that has an existing single-family residence that wants to do a relatively cheap interior partition. So I, you know, as this is crafted, it's meant to also apply to that situation, and it might be a lot more difficult for that individual who's also, by the way, presumably just a private homeowner and not a business.
So we also, we had this situation come up in what the state requires. It's a 50% more renovation. There's numbers that we can target so that it doesn't keep people with smaller projects from being able to do that. We have examples of that.
Gotcha. So it's like a substantial expansion kind of provision.
So I just want to call out if we're reviewing the code, 255, 550, one. I think we had a different discussion. It says issues shall be unlawful unless in the affordable housing overlay district. But I thought we came up with an idea that people could come to us with singular properties.
Right, but then we would still have to, we would have the planning department. So somebody comes to us, we refer to the planning department, they take a look at it. We would still have to have a public hearing to put an AHO on that property.
Yeah, I mean, the issue is how we expand the AHO. If it's an individual case, like, this could only take place in an AHO. The conversation we had was if people ask us to designate a particular property, we then designate it as an AHO.
Right.
So.
After public hearing.
Yeah, 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 any zone change would be.
Yeah.
And that's sort of, there's sort of two ways that a zone change will come up. One, and I believe is the better way, is in a comprehensive look at where to add, you know, substantial areas of AHO. The other, though, and any property owner in the town is fully within their rights and it's a codified process, anyone can petition the town board for adding the AHO or changing my zoning from A5 to A2. Or, you know, anyone can petition the town board, so. And you know that because you've already had that. I know there's a property on Three Mile Harbor Road that has asked the board about adding the AHO so that they can do staff housing. So it really could come up either way.
Yeah, I just Googled the all-electric building code, and it's basically, it's going to be required of most new buildings to be all-electric starting in 2026. The code's going to be phased in with buildings of seven stories or less required to comply starting in '26 and larger buildings following in 2029. So Jake, you'll do your search, but this may have already been decided for us.
Yes, that's what I was saying. And also then, number three, dimensional regulations, we talked about minimum lot area required. And I think you're.
Yeah, I was thinking more like 40,000 square feet, not 20,000 initially.
I'd be in favor of the 20. I mean, it goes back to say with the ADUs. I think it just limits how much we can provide by having the larger lot.
Yeah, I'm good with 20.
I think so on 20,000 square foot, you would be able to put two units? I think, I think it's an acre. For maximizing the potential of what you could put on for affordable housing. I think four units really should be the minimum.
Well, we wouldn't be maximizing anything then. We're just, we're restricting it on the smaller ones. Because on a half acre, you couldn't do four, it's true, but it would be more opportunities for more units. I understand where you guys are coming from, but we're not preventing the four on the one acre. We're just allowing the two on a half acre in the proposed scenario.
Yeah, I just would like to promote the four on an acre.
And I would prefer to start right now with the acre zoning with the 40,000. Right now, we went down to, you know, they detached to 20,000, maybe even lower also, sort of support also. But I think with this new code, 40,000 right now is a good starting point to see how it affects itself and rolls out into.
Yeah, that's fine. My only concerns are, again, is being more restrictive. We're doing this because there's not a lot of properties of more than three acres. There's not a ton of properties more than one acre. And so are we going to find a property that is three quarters of an acre we think would have been perfect and isn't allowed? So I do feel that 20,000 is appropriate, but noted that we don't have consensus there.
Okay, so we could get this revised and bring it back to the work session on Tuesday because we can't notice it until the 21st anyway, so.
Can I, can we get clarification of what we're revising, though? Because sustainable landscaping, I am not in favor of a stricter code for this type of development than any other. So do we have consensus that everybody wants to add in code for multiple residents that requires a different type of landscaping than we required on for regular residents?
I would like to see it across the town on regular residences, but certainly.
Separate conversation.
I think that if we're opening up opportunities and thinking about the future, because we really can't go back in time and changes regulations 20 years ago if we knew what was going to happen with this stuff, that I don't really think it's an impediment not to have a manicured Kentucky bluegrass lawn that has to be irrigated. I think it saves money to do sustainable landscaping. And I think, again, we can't work in silos, we're ignoring everything else and just, you know, only applying it to certain circumstances. I think it's important for the future and for drinkable water, et cetera, and for pollinators and for all the things we talk about all the time to apply those rules. I would like to see across the board.
I share Kate's concerns. However, I think to do that, I think that should be an overall code change that affects every properties. I don't think we should be focusing that on these properties because I think the housing need is so great.
And if it's as important, that important issue, which I don't disagree with, and we were to change it townwide, it would immediately apply to this as well. So again, if we do it only for this, where there are no units available and don't do it for rest of the town, I don't think we're making environmental improvement, but I think we're being still more restrictive for affordable housing.
So I think part of our job is to not just always say, well, this has always been this way, and if we're not going to go back in time and change it, but we're looking for future planning, right? We're building, these are new units that would be built, again, subject to the to the existing, if it's an existing or if it's a new development. And I don't see an impediment for landscaping to not to be sustainable. I don't understand how, you don't have to put irrigation in, you don't have to do this. How is that an impediment to being able to build these?
Well, I just think generally harder, stronger, stricter rules for this than everything else. I don't think we would do much environmental good if this is a big problem. But we didn't draft legislation to do it in every residential case, but only for affordable multiple residences, so.
So I'm, well, we're doing with all town projects as well, and I think that we should start promoting these ideas by being an example of this in our new construction and not just saying, well, we didn't make other people do it in the past. Well, we didn't have the knowledge.
So can I just ask, Eric, how is it done when it goes, when a site plan goes before the planning board? And what's the language that's used for for this lane?
So what we almost always require, you know, the first layer of review will come from the planning department in review of what was submitted for the planning board. We always prohibit the inclusion of any invasive species. We always recommend use of native species, but as long as something is not invasive, you know, if it's ornamental but not native. but not native, it's usually allowed. They're getting more towards the need for irrigation and specific types of plants. There isn't anything that prohibits use of irrigation just generally. But most landscaping plans don't include that, you know, maybe to start plantings. But honestly with this, I don't think it would be that difficult or that onerous on the applicants. I mean, especially if what we're talking about at the end of the day is sort of less than more. So in other words, we're talking about not having irrigation systems, having plants that are drought tolerant. You know, I don't know that it would necessarily be problematic to have that as a requirement, that there be sustainable landscaping.
What does that mean in precise words though? Cause a requirement that is sustainable landscaping to me doesn't, what does that mean?
I mean, unless I'm mistaking the term, I think it just means something that doesn't require extensive, or any use of fertilizer, irrigation, is a native plant species, is drought tolerant. I mean, perhaps you could correct me if I'm wrong, because you're kind of using the term sustainable landscaping. We don't.
Would a lawn fall into that category?
Yes. A Kentucky bluegrass lawn, that is not a natural landscape that you have to perpetually fertilize and water to be able to have it live. I think that's not, that's an example of not, of unsustainable landscaping.
Yeah.
But having a grass with clover that doesn't get fertilized.
Or watered.
Or watered is fine.
I think that also, again, silos, right? So we're talking about, oh, we don't want to put an impediment on, on these projects, but we're also, we're seeing massive uses across the town for watering, for landscaping that's impacting our groundwater. And setting the example, I think is something that we do. We set the example for how to do it a better way. That, that, that lessens impacts, overall impacts on the community. And these aren't impact you see within a month. These are longer term impacts that we're seeing now. If we could go back in time and change some things, we certainly would have. And I really, I don't, I, the question is, how is this an impediment to anyone providing affordable housing?
Well, you just reminded me, like right now, sub county water authority's got us at a level one, right? And people are supposed to be, who do water their lawn, if your house ends in an even, a number, you can water on an even day. But if it falls on an odd number, they're asking you to, you know, water on an odd day in order to conserve. So I mean, I think that Eric can find the language, because they're doing it now when they're, when they're doing the memos that they're writing to the planning.
I agree. I think, I think Ian's point, so that like this should be applied townwide, not just to these projects.
I'd like to bring that forward, but I think we start by leading by example.
Well, but if we do our own projects, then, then I agree. We can set our own standards and make sure that it includes everything. This is legislation that's supposed to create opportunities for anybody. So they won't only be our projects. And I mean, I also just would have to voice concern, you know, well, first of all, I think that the specificity of these words matter. And we aren't being precise enough that, you know, what is it? Like what kind of grass is okay and what kind is not? I think it's going to be tricky to do that. But also we want landscaping to be successful. So if we just say you can't irrigate and then somebody plants, it's a drought right now.
I haven't irrigated in seven years. I have really nice clover and stuff growing in my backyard.
So I'm not in favor of this right now. I may have to break you right here.
I haven't used pesticides or any fertilizers in years.
David's up.
Yeah, I'll use the word prefer, go to site plan, let them at site plan, find out what's, what's most sensitive use, sustainable, native. Let me be very honest, native vegetation, there's a lot we put out there in the deer browser and people are spending tens of thousands of dollars on something that's getting eaten. That's a whole separate story. But what happens when we're trying to almost allow for more density and sometimes in some of our, our community, our neighborhoods, we need to be able to screen that at times and allow the site plan and the planning board to be able to give their recommendations or the, or the definitions to the applicant. And sometimes that's not going to be able to be done by, we're not going to be able to screen, screen the neighbors through native or sustainable landscaping. So I would give the preference to the, the planning department and the planning board personally, and not make it a required, but preferred might be the word I would use on there. As far as going to the electric, yes, I think we'd make that required for solar, to be prepared for solar.
Okay. So preferred sustainable native landscaping, but have the, the properties be solar ready and have the properties be all electric.
I'm comfortable with that.
I, I don't think we should have a more strict require. I mean, so take a scenario, somebody's either going to build a four unit, you know, affordable multiple residence development, or a, you know, mini mansion. In the affordable multiple residence scenario, they would have to meet a stricter standard than for the mini mansion. That makes no sense to me.
So to me, what we're talking about is, so now I'm, I'm going to build a multi-residence. I'm making a choice between, you know, an electric stove, induction stove and a gas stove. I'm making a difference, decision between an electric dryer and a, and a gas dryer. I, I don't think that that's too much of a burden to ask people to use electric, all electric appliances.
I mean, I would love to bring all electric back. I, we didn't have support when, when it first got brought to the, to the board. In two different presentations, we, we did not have consensus on that. But if the board's expressing now that they'd like to see that again, I'm happy.
Well, we decided that there, we wanted, the state was like on the precipice, it goes into effect 2026. We knew that there were going to be lawsuits and we didn't want to be, you know, the one that drove that or have to defend against it. And it was something that gave people plenty of notice to ramp up to 2026 when they had to go all electric. I mean, I'm still good with that decision we made. I mean, 2026 is five months away.
Yeah. Again, my thing is just whether it's a burden or whatever we want to call it, it's a restriction we would be applying to only affordable multiple residents, but not in the scenario of a wealthy home that we've all sort of talked about. So I don't understand this, why we want to be more strict.
Well, we thought it all right. If we set precedent, we can go court, it would be all electric.
No, but that's different. That's our project. So we're funding it. We can do what we want to do. This is legislative.
So I think if you go through the things, I think that we have consensus for preferred sustainable native landscaping and let the planning board and the department handle that. But I think we've got consensus three to two for solar ready and all electric. I don't know where you.
I'm in a.
Aren't we, Jake, to find out if the, these new state regulations apply to these developments?
But I think regardless, it sounded like three of us were good with all electric.
Yeah. I, again, for a private developer, I just don't see it as what the burden is.
I guess if, just one point would be if you have an existing property and the utility setup for that property is gas and, you know, not solar, you are imposing that extra cost on them to create affordable housing. That's not something I want to have happen because I want to deliver affordable housing.
So that's why it would apply, just like the state code is going to apply and things that we do in building, to enforce things on a certain percentage of, of upgrade. We have, if it's less than 50%, it doesn't apply. If it's less than this, it doesn't apply. We, we write those in specifically to protect people from having to go out of their way for existing structures. What we're really looking to do is again, plan for the future and start to direct where we want the future to go, our new construction.
So Eric, do you have enough details there of how you would, you know, I'm not in favor of that change, but I do want to make sure we have some concrete, you know, we can put it in the code and, and bring it back.
Yeah. I mean, I was gonna, I, I think Jake is going to look into some of the issues regarding the all electric, the solar ready aspect, which I see as sort of two different elements or requirements. It's my understanding there's some kind of policy of when that has to be done, that there's like a rule about substantial expansion. I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, there's rules about substantial expansion. We have them, you know, we, we have rules that trigger that as well.
Okay. So I want to get more information on both of those, just to craft the wording appropriately. But I think, I think with knowing that there's going to be that further, you know, looking into what the, the rules are, I can, I have what I need to craft an amendment.
Yeah. I mean, in conjunction with the town attorney's office, I don't know who got Jake assigned as the attorney to work with Eric on this, but.
Oh, it's you?
Brittany.
Oh, Brittany. So Brittany will be, can assist you. Okay, great.
And the lot area, did we have consensus on that? I think we did, right? It was going to be to 40,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think David, Kate and myself were more comfortable with 40 initially.
And I will also make the change that the minimum size of a unit is 300 square feet.
Everybody going with 300?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So it's 400 goes to 300 square feet.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you. It's good to see you, Eric.
Thanks a lot, Eric.
Yes, Eric. It's good to see you.
And hopefully we'll have you back next week.
All right. Yep. And just so you know too, so I will draft a revision first and, and send it around to you ahead of that. Just want to make that clear.
And please work with Brittany. Okay. Lastly is ditch plains dune reconstruction. Kate.
Yes. Catherine, could you pull that up, please?
Thank you, Catherine. I appreciate you running the presentation. So this is a brief update on the ditch plains dune reconstruction project. I just wanted to remind the first slide after the title, you can go to the next slide, that will just, it just is a summary of the project milestones to date. So 202, $2.5 million was secured from Governor Holkel for the project in addition to matching town funds. We contracted with Dr. Henry Boekenevich, who was the director of SOMAS Coastal Ocean Action Strategies Institute Laboratory to give us a model of what he thought would be most protective for the ditch plains neighborhood. We then contracted with Coastal Science and Engineering, which is an award winning team of scientists and engineers who specialized in problem solvings in the coastal zone. We also worked with a team, a staff team as well from Natural Resources Department and the Planning Department in the design of this project. We had a complete design applied to the DEC earlier this year for a permit to, which is the permit that we need to be able to do this reconstruction of the dune. And we received that permit on July 31st, 2025. And then our next steps, which is on the next slide, Catherine, thank you. We are securing easements from the private property owners and will issue a request for bids.
Of bids, yeah.
Yeah.
For, we'll go out for bid.
We'll go out for bid for contractors for the build. And then we will reconstruct the dune. This is meant to take place in the fall of this year. And then the last slide is the approved plan on the permit from the DEC of where the dune will be constructed. As you can see, for the parking lot areas, in order to maintain public access, we are not building a dune across that area. What we will do is what we've done in the past. And again, these are approved plans by the DEC. We'll plug those with sand, with something coming in that we've done on orders successfully.
When there's a storm.
Yeah. A storm approaching. We've had very good accretion on, on ditch of the Burma the Beach this year, but we still are at no profile for a dune. And in order to protect the neighborhood that will be constructing a dune, it is based on funding opportunities that exist right now on FEMA in the event of damage to the dune in a storm. Of course, that's up, that type of funding is up in the air as well. But we are going to build it to the design standards that Dr. Boekenevich first set out for us in order to protect the ditch plains neighborhood. And that's where we are at the moment. So we have, we know that the bids will be going out soon.
They're going out September 4th and they're due back September 25th.
So we're moving ahead, basically moving ahead with the project. We'll stabilize the project for, over the winter and make sure that we'll be able to have vegetation on it as well. And of course, that vegetation, everything that happens is part of the DEC permit.
Yeah. I just want to say, Kate, thank you for moving this forward. I think this is a really important project. I know it takes a lot of work to get it in order. And I know the dune is going to look different, but I've heard nothing but positive feedback and support from people who use that beach. I think it'll be a more resilient, safer coastline. And, and again, I know it's been a process, so thank you for moving it along.
Yeah. And thank you, Ian, the support from the neighborhood. I mean, we saw unprecedented flooding in that neighborhood with three, just three unnamed storms that happened over December 2023 and 2024. So we were so fortunate that the FIMP project, the renourishment of that beach happened right after that. And now this is what we want to do for ditch. And I know that David, through the FIMP project, was, we are working on having ditch included as a betterment in terms of, for the Army Corps project. But this is something that we all, we all agree is, is critical to happen as soon as possible to protect that neighborhood as much as we can.
Yeah. I echo my colleague's sentiment. Thank you, Kate, for, for bringing this forward. It's, you know, we, we understand the economic benefit of this beach to the town as a whole. The surf community, the surf culture and the businesses that built up around that in the town are huge. So this is critical. I, just looking at the aerial, you know, the one thing that, you know, I know we've talked about both internally is the hard structure in front of the, the trailer park, you know, obviously has had an impact on the erosion in this beach to some degree. What have we kind of planned for in terms of the dune to kind of bear that impact as it goes forward?
So the dune will not be reacting with the, with the, the tides? It's, it's being placed far back enough to not be in the tidal area. But also I have to say that both Dr. Boekenevich and, and coastal engineering did not attribute what was happening at ditch to that structure.
Good to know.
Which is how I, you know, hard structures are not something I would ever say are important unless you're at the point where nothing else is going to work. And we're not at that point yet. We're still looking at natural solutions. But it is a permitted structure. So I don't think we, there's any action that would be taken.
Thank you.
So I look for the process moving forward. I think everyone has to recognize that this dune that's going to be built there is going to change the profile of that beach. But it's going to be a more sustainable and protect the neighborhood. Again, economically also then too. But there's going to definitely going to be a profile change there from a large amount of sand that's added to it. So if you have any questions, please reach out.
Yes. Great. Okay. We are now going to move on to liaison reports. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. One second. Pull it out. The Amagansett Systems Advisory Committee met last night. We had the Amagansett Fire Chief as the guest speaker. There was discussion around the fire, Fort July Fire in the Napeak area. Recap was given the chief's meeting. Questions that did come up, you know, that I advise people on first was, you know, the concept of evacuation in the event of a larger fire, what people should do about that. I've advised people as before, please go to the Town's Emergency Preparedness webpage. Additionally, we have geo fencing in place that should there be an incident in that area, you can be contacted by text. One thing that committee, sorry, community members did bring up, which I think is a good concept is it might be worthwhile the next few months to put some signage out in the town, just warning of fire risk, especially in that Napeak area to avoid people throwing cigarettes out the window, et cetera. The old Smokey the Bear concept. Additionally, some good news for Amagansett that I delivered to them last night with regards to Cranby Hole Road Bridge. So is people aware that the funding for that bridge was approved in the MTA's 2025, 2029 capital plan? With that critical step completed, the procurement package has now been approved and has been advertised for posers. It's anticipated this will be awarded by the end of this year. With the project team's help, they're hopeful that the, they will begin work on that project at the next year. Fire Marshal's Office, I just wanted to deliver some stats from the Fire Marshal's Office as to what they've been up to year to date. You know, key numbers here, commercial fire inspections were at 1,350 on properties, public assembly inspections, they've done 1,000 this year. The Fire Marshal's Office has issued 233 notices violation. They've performed 178 technical and construction assistant projects. They've issued 62 tent permits. They've issued 20 traffic tickets. Please do not park and fund a fire hydrant, reminder to the public. 60 business permits issued, 20 ADA inspections, 50 building and equipment plan reviews, and 33 fire investigations. Performing a huge amount of work late into the night. Just want to pass my thanks on to all members, all employees in that department for the great job they are doing. Public safety raised to me by some of the fire chiefs, Edgemere Street. There was another incident this weekend. There was another incident this weekend, there was an EMS caller this weekend, and the responders were nearly hit by vehicles passing. You know, the parking in the the side of the roads there is hugely problematic. I have reached out to County Legislature and Welker to discuss this and kind of come up with some new proposed plans. It's it's a problematic area, but it's something that we will have to take action to address in the future because.
They didn't close, I thought they closed the road down. They didn't close the road down?
No, they had to close the road down after that incident occurred, yeah. So so of major concern. I I had the honor of attending the Eastfield Community Historical Society event this week. It was a charming and very well-attended event. Thank you to Dr. Key for coordinating that. I encourage residents, if they can, to visit that site. There's some fantastic artwork in that building as well by local artists, and it commemorates the history. Really great to attend, so there was that.
And thank you for giving them the proclamation. It was their 40th annual fish fry, and they wanted to honor some of the elders that had started that that effort, so I appreciate you going.
No, it was, it was great, and I have to say it was some of the best carrot cake I've ever had. Thank you to them for that. And then just lastly, for my liaison reports, for the TIC Committee. So I don't know if we're aware, but Senator Gillibrand's recently called for 12 million for the development for the Department of Defense TIC Born Disease Research Program. This is obviously a huge issue out here. Assemblyman Shavoni, I know, has been working in Albany to kind of get this to the top of the agenda as well. We've been meeting as a committee throughout the year. We're now into the stage about prevention tactics, so we've had initial discussions around the Fort Poster Program, you know, tubes to address small mammals, you know, managing the deer population as well to do this. There's some things, I think, actions we could take as a town that could really mitigate this. So if there is funding available at a federal or a state level, it's something that I'd like for us to pursue and potentially match to kind of start to address this across the town. That's it for my liaison report.
Great, thanks, Tom. David?
I'm going to punt everything to next, next week.
Okay.
You're welcome, Chris Walsh.
I'm up?
Yes, you're up.
I'm going to talk about St. Matthew's Chapel. I'm going to take my liaison report time to talk about St. Matthew's Chapel. This past Sunday, I attended the Calvary Baptist Church barbecue, which is back to everyone's delight and deliciousness. And I sat with the pastors and talked about the topic of St. Matthew's Chapel came up. And for folks that don't know, the St. Matthew's Chapel, for more than a century, was the center of an East Hampton community of indigenous, black and white worshippers, and it was rescued from demolition in in 1776 and put onto a private property. There have been efforts, this church was erected in 1852, and it was, throughout its life as a church, was the, the Freetown Building was at the center of a multi-ethnic community. In fact, Stephen Talkhouse was eulogized. I've I've met people that have been baptized and got married in in the chapel as well. It's quite small. And back in 2022, there was some efforts to to talk to the private property owner about restoring the Freetown Chapel back to Freetown and the Calvary Baptist Church are an appropriate location. And I just, after speaking to people in Freetown and Prudence Carabine's efforts to bring the history of Freetown to the future, I I will be pursuing, taking this effort up again on behalf of the residents of Freetown.
Thanks, Kate.
That's it. Ian?
Yeah, just a brief report. First of all, I always say this when nobody's here anymore, but another, you know, tribute to the library and and providing the space with the turnout that we had, I think it's just great to see, and that happened last month as well. So greatly appreciated that that you allow us here, and it's it's great to see so many people enjoy it. Ag advisory has been canceled for this Thursday. Well, canceled, maybe that's not even true. They they never really intend to meet throughout the busiest part of the season, but just so everybody knows, there will not be ag advisory meeting this coming Thursday. Property Management Committee will meet next Wednesday at 4:30 at Town Hall, August 20. One of the main things we're talking about is the management plan for the Osborne Homestead. And recently, I was reached out to by a couple of people from Wayne Scott, who sort of did it with trepidation, frankly, and said, oh, when's the appropriate time to talk? Should we wait till the public hearing? And the answer is no, don't wait. We're drafting a plan now. I want to hear from everybody, and I promise you I'll listen. I won't promise you I'll agree, but I'll listen. And the best time to have your voice heard is from the very beginning. Of course, there will be a public hearing once we have a draft plan, but that plan will only be better for having common. So if anybody has any strong thoughts about that, make sure you reach out and we can incorporate them. And of course, everybody's welcome to attend that meeting. The Parsons Blacksmith Shop will be open on August 23. I'll remind you again next week that coincides with the farmer's market, you know, right across from Ashwag Hall. I encourage everybody to check it out. That building has been cleaned up by the Springs Historical Society. And again, I'll do my my weekly plug of the 50th anniversary of the Springs Historical Society with all sorts of great events, and a week from Saturday, the Parsons Blacksmith Shop being open will be one of them. Lastly, I, you know, want to share some, what I think is very, very good news. We closed on a property for the homeownership program, affordable homeownership in in town. And frankly, there's been some frustration here with closing on deals based on a a ground lease. We used to own the land and and lease it to somebody, and that has caused problems recently with lenders and state organizations. And like I said, it's been, it's been pretty frustrating. I know people in the public sometimes want things to move more quickly, and this was one that was was frankly baffling that, you know, all these organizations trying to provide affordable housing were finding reasons why, you know, it didn't work. But John Gilnicki, Eric Schantz, and a number of people worked with, you know, outside council with the state, and we switched to a deed restriction, so we'll be selling the land in totality, but with restrictions in place to make sure that the affordability is maintained over the long haul. So I I just see that as a momentous thing. It's been too long since we've closed. Hopefully, we have a document in place now that will facilitate transfers, and it mirrors more, you know, accurately what people are doing in in traditional transactions. And so I think that's really, really good news. And and again, just want to recognize John Gilnicki, who who did a lot of the work here, and Eric Schantz as well, and of course, Jake. So that's all I have.
All right, so during the summer, I usually give the East Hampton Town Police Department Weekend Activity Update. So this is Friday through 6:00 AM Monday. They had 242 calls for service, nine total arrests, 17 residential noise complaints, eight commercial noise complaints with one violation issued, six accidents, 24 AID cases. They wrote six summonses for town ordinances, four open alcohol, two public urination. Their supplemental shift, which works late Saturday night, wrote tickets for four stopped in roadway, two moving violations and seven parking summonses. The Sandcastle Contest at Atlantic Beach went out, went off without any incident. We also had SLA investigators out on Sunday afternoon, and inspections were performed with PD, Fire Marshals and Code Enforcement. Right now, we're in the throes of 2026 budget meetings with department heads. So town board members have been meeting with their liaison as the liaison, and we're, you know, getting what the department heads are looking for in 2026. Fire Protection Districts, there was a public comment on Thursday night where Mr. Buddha was asking what the breakdown was for the two different fire protection districts. So the, in 2026, the Northwest Fire Protection District, it's $2.56 million, and the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District is $1.3 million. And in 2027, the Northwest Fire Protection District is $2.6 million, and the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District is $1.36 million. And lastly, I know Big John said it, we have a big, big celebration coming up this Friday, 2 to 4, at the Montauk Playhouse and for the ribbon cutting. And I had the privilege of going through the building last Friday, and I just want to say, it's a wow. I spoke to Jen Iaccona, who's the board president now, and she took former board, board members and board presidents through, and they were in tears. So really exciting. I hope you all can join us. We've actually asked LTV to film, film it so that, because I think they have over 200 people signed up right now to attend, but it's, it, the building's stunning, and it's going to be so welcomed by our community. So let's go to resolutions.
Kathy, can I just say, I'm sorry, two omissions, one of which is LTV. I also want to acknowledge their effort in making the the Montauk Library a space as well. They did a lot of work to make this happen. And then also Habitat for Humanity was a partner in that home sale that we just did, and I want to acknowledge the work that they do. Diane Manders and their whole team have been great, and I hope to work with them again in the future.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ian. Tom?
Yes, I'll start with Resolution 2025-1092. This is to authorize attendance at the Food Managers Course at the Human Services Department, be it resolved at the Town Board. Hereby authorizes Ms. Michelle Pizzico, Senior Assistant Program Advisor, Holly Miller, Assistant Cook, and Selena Czese, Assistant Cook, to attend this training at a registration fee of $50 per employee, total cost of $150.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm pleased to be able to offer Resolution 2025-1093. This is to appoint seasonal lifecards in the Recreational Department for August 2025, retroactive to August 10, 2025. Names, position and pay rates listed below.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1094, susceptible donation to the Montauk Playhouse and a budget modification, where the town of East Hampton has been aware that the Montauk Playhouse Foundation is making a donation to the town for recreational, recreational equipment to the Montauk Playhouse from the Jumanine Brian Seacamp in the amount of $15,000. We're increasing the revenue line for gifts and donations in the amount of $15,000, and expenditure line in the amount of $15,000. And this is going to go to sporting equipment. I thank Mr. Seacamp.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
1095 is water quality grant extensions, multiple ones. The first one, the project sponsors the New York State Center for Clean Water Technology. The next one is for the Montauk Historic, sorry, East Hampton Historical Society for Wastewater Treatment. Improving this again, these authorizes one-year extensions.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 1096. It's to amend Urban Renewal Map SP-4-2, Urban Renewal Parcel 161, and this is to move an access point. The Town Board held a public hearing on July 3 to consider this, moving the access point, and this will go, take the access point for that parcel from Harbor Boulevard to Park Street. This is a type, let's see, this is a, under the provisions of SEACRA, a negative declaration and resolve that the Town Board hereby approves the modification to move the driveway access from the parcel from Harbor Boulevard to Park Street, with said driveway being no closer than 50 feet to the eastbound travel lane of Harbor Boulevard.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1097, this is to authorize a transfer of funds. Finance Department is hereby authorized a transfer $220,000 from Nap Peak Beach Construction to the land building upgrades.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1098, this is to authorize an appraisal for Suffolk County Tax Map Number This is to authorize an appraisal for Elise Preto in the amount of $600.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-1099 is to list appointment to Police Officer Police Academy, and this is for six individuals, Abraham Badio, Julie Cataladati, Corin Indu, Tyler Kilnick, Michael Letcher, and this is for them to attend the Police Academy effective August 17, 2025, and their annual salary will be $66,548.67.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1100 is to amend Resolution 2025-952, John Lowe to begin Police Officer Police Academy. So we had put Mr. Lowe on unpaid leave of absence, waiting for the academy to start. So his leave of absence will end on August 16. He'll be back on the payroll August 17, and so that he can attend the academy.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
1101 is to authorize the use of the town credit card for police department training, and this is in a cost not to exceed $1,500.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1102, we held a public hearing last Thursday. This is for the 2025 agreement with the Village of Saic Harbor for the East Hampton Road Protection District, and the payment of $67,811.08 shall be made for such services for the 12-month period of 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And I believe that's what we have. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for litigation, CPF, public safety and personnel.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and thank you, LTV.
You have a time?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. You are off the air.